Hey, good evening. It's 6:00 PM on the dot, more or less. This is the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for October 26th. And let us please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are officially called to order and we have tonight actually a public hearing. This is going to be a poll hearing with the N-Star Electric doing business as EverSource Energy. I'd like to call the public hearing to order to open up the public hearing. And do we have anyone from EverSource available tonight that are here? All right, would you please come up to the mic right up here in the center and introduce yourself?
And I will read the notification first.
Do all the other stuff?
Town of Southampton Select Board petitions for poll and locations. The Southampton Select Board will hold a hearing at 6:00 PM on October 26th, 2021, in the Town Hall First Floor Meeting Room located at 210 College Highway. On the petition by N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy requesting permission to relocate and/or install poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Locations: 167 Glendale Road. Reason: Install one solely owned pole. The new pole will be located 110 foot north of existing pole 1911 and 24 feet west of the center line of Glendale Road. The purpose of this new pole is a relocation of pole 1910 per customer request. The existing pole 1910 is to be removed. Wherefore they pray that after due notice and hearing is provided by law, let it be granted a location for and permission to construct and maintain a pole, wires, and cables together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary said pole to be erected substantially in accordance with the field plan here with and made a part here of marked 80075127. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, Christine Foles, Chair, Select Board, Town of Southampton.
Okay, so would you like to fill us in a little bit in terms of this request, please?
Uh, yeah, Anthony from EverSource, the field tech for the Southampton area. Basically, the homeowner is expanding his single wide driveway to a double wide and there's a pole right on his driveway, so he just needs it moved a little bit down the street so he can widen out his driveway a little.
Is this a new homeowner or an existing homeowner? It's not a new construction, it's a new?
No, it's an existing home that he's moved into and he's just renovating and prettying it up a little.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Ma'am?
I think actually Anthony's last name is on this thing for the minutes on the EverSource petition. Is it Gentile?
Uh, Gentile, yeah.
I have two questions. First of all, were the butters notified?
Yes.
Okay. So I think this is the first poll hearing that actually that I've seen that the reason for the pole being moved or installed is at the customer request. So did they pay for that or is that paid for through the general customers of EverSource?
Under normal circumstances, that would be, the customer will be on the hook for that. But since this pole wasn't up to current EverSource standards in the first place and it was going to be replaced at some point, EverSource covered the cost of that because it needed to be brought up to a 40 footer and it was only a 35.
Okay, how long ago was the original pole put in?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall, but it was pretty old. My guess was that it was sometime between, I think it was mid-'70s, 1970s.
And just one other question, when you actually move a pole and you take care of the underground cables and such, is that all, it's obviously not interrupting the roadway. It's on the person's property or it's on, it's on probably the town property, but it's not, you don't involve digging up a roadway, right?
Nope, not for an overhead like this.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from anyone?
And I will just add that our Highway Superintendent Randall Kemp has reviewed this and has no issues with it.
Okay, all right. And just, I can't tell the scale on the diagram that you gave. How far is it from the existing pole? I'm trying to envision that.
Um, I believe I wrote it in the original work order, which I had to rush over here so I didn't have time to pull my laptop up, but I think it's moving about 20 to 30 feet.
Yeah, it mentions here on the bottom, 110 feet north of the existing pole.
Yeah.
Oh, it's north of the pole that's being replaced, is that what that is?
I guess, and 24 feet west of the center line of Glendale Road, so.
That's 110.
No, that's, that's the pole which would be after this one.
Right.
Not the existing one?
Not, not the existing pole.
Yeah, the new, the new pole will be, well, it says 110 feet north of the existing pole.
If it's 110 feet north of the existing pole, that means it's, I believe the original measurement was, the existing pole that I'm referencing in that poll petition isn't moving. May I, do you have a copy of that?
Sure, you can interpret it.
Yeah, it does seem like that's a requesting permission.
EverSource is requesting permission to install one solely owned pole. The new pole will be located 110 feet north of an existing pole, number 1911, and 24 feet west of the center line of Glendale Road. The purpose of this new pole is a relocation of pole 1910, not 1911, and the existing pole 1910 is to be removed.
It is confusing, though.
Correct.
So it's basically 110 from, from pole to pole? From existing pole to the new pole as opposed to?
Yeah, they have two existing poles on there. I couldn't tell which one was which.
Yeah, 110 feet seems like a lot of distance.
The new span will be 110 feet pole to pole. The existing span is, they're usually 150 feet.
Right, so what's, what wasn't clear. Okay, so the pole 1911 is where they're measuring from and pole 1910 is going to be removed altogether. So that's the one at the top of the?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, they just, they're both there, so they refer to them both as existing poles, so it does get confusing, absolutely.
I drew this petition up a while back and my, my skills in drawing poll petitions have evolved since then.
Thank you, quite all right. Okay, all right, thanks, all right. Does anyone in the public have any questions about this? Yes, please. Hello.
Cindy Palmer, 71, Glendale Road. I just have a question of whether or not this is a situation where the building inspector has approved the driveway expansion. I'm on the planning board and granted, I don't remember every single detail, but I don't know if this would go before the planning board, but I'm just wondering, I haven't seen it, and I just wonder if the building inspector has approved this driveway or should be at least apprised of it?
No, it would not be the building inspector. It would actually fall under census permit to work in the public way under the Highway Superintendent. And I do not know if he is.
The driveway expansion would fall under the Highway Department?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's unusual. Would that be classified as an additional curb cut?
What's that?
Would that be classified as an additional curb cut? In layman's terms, which would be the permit that would need to be pulled by the Highway Superintendent?
They would still, even if it doesn't require a curb cut permit, it would require a permit to work in the public way. And I would think that it would still fall under the, whether it's an additional or an expansion of an existing curb cut. It would still have to be approved by the Highway Superintendent.
Well, yeah, I think both would go to the Highway Superintendent. There's just a fee to be collected if it's a curb cut, an additional curb cut.
So we don't know the answer to that, actually?
No, I do not.
No, but I mean, I think the fee's $25 and it's just random approving it. It doesn't go beyond that.
Correct.
And he already verbally told the TA that he's fine with it?
Well, he has no issues with the pole moving to cause like any site impairments or anything like that.
So satisfy everybody? Okay, any other questions from the public at all? All right, any other questions from the Select Board?
No, I don't.
Then at that point, I think we could make a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Grab a second, please.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed at 6:10. So with that, are we ready to vote on this request for the poll hearing? I mean for the poll, yeah. Poll location, move on. Thank you. Poll move at 167 Glendale Road. Okay, could we have a second, please?
A second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against? All right, approved unanimously, all right. Thank you very much, Anthony, for coming, appreciate it.
Have a good one, take care.
Thank you, okay.
A blessing.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we don't have any other presentations at the moment, so we do have open time for the public. Is anyone so inclined this evening?
Someone will have to sign over there.
Okay, sure. I do, I do want to mention that yes, there is trick or treating. I've gotten a couple of questions about that. And Halloween is this Sunday and to my knowledge, the town is allowing trick or treating, you know, mask wearing. Be prepared to have trick or treaters come. And the Board of Health did send along some guidelines for our Halloween, some health tips, so I will post those on social media and various places. But yes, there's Halloween trick or treating on actual trick or treating this year.
Okay, thanks for that, very good. Nobody else for open time for the public, all right. Then we will move on to our quarterly reports. We have quite a few tonight and actually I think people were assuming we'd have a little bit more business before coming. So some people may not be here until like 6:30. However, I do see that we have the Planning Board Chair here. So Paul, if you'd like to come up and give us your report, that would be great.
Good evening, everyone. Paul Damon from Planning Board. I sent this ahead of time and hopefully you received it and reviewed it. It's very brief. Some things could take a little discussion, but under priorities and activities, as you know, we've been working on bylaw review now for edits going on probably three years. And it's a slow process and we just lost our original consultant Larry Smith, who retired last year for health reasons. He was, he vacationed in Mexico winters, so that cut out about four or five months of our time. So that's why it's been a slow process. In the interim, we hired Richard Harris, the former town planner of South Hadley, who was over there for 25-plus years, very well organized and very experienced. And he came highly recommended by Larry. And he has now picked up the ball and has got an aggressive campaign going on how he's going to approach this to move it forward. And hopefully we'll have something for town meeting this spring, probably half of it or in sections. We still haven't figured that out yet, but the plan is to move it forward with a much, much more speed. And I'll speak about the cost of that as we go along here in this report. And also with the bylaws, he has reviewed the master plan. He's reviewed the affordable housing plan, which is also under review. He's reviewed the open space and recreation. So he's got a handle on how to take and incorporate all the facets of those things in the new bylaw revision, so we're not going back, you know, a month or six months after we pass them and making amendments to same. So he's trying to put that all together. And the other activity which is current, which gained a little bit of controversy, was the 32 High Street stormwater permit that was issued to Greg Felton back in January of '21. Evidently, a butter and a neighbor had some questions and came to a meeting with them, contacted Conservation, Highway Department, et cetera. This board, the Planning Board, issued the permit and it has one year for him to complete the work. However, the bylaw states that if the work isn't completed, he can grant, request an extension. And he has done so, but it won't be brought up until our next meeting next Wednesday. And it has something to do with the precast culvert that was a condition of the permit, which is to control the stream that's coming off of the hill. And with the wet summer we've had, we all know how wet it was. It's pretty difficult to do construction. And this has also guidelines with Conservation where they have a little bit of stake in this as well on how you go about doing that. It virtually has to be somewhat dry before you can dig and then install it. So that's where they're at right now. Other than that, the site has been well constructed. Swales, the riprap, the retention area, the driveways. It's been stabilized quite a bit from what it was when we first started this ordeal about two years ago. And I had Randall Kemp weigh in on this because the original thing that precipitated this whole issue was the amount of water and runoff and silt and gravel that came across High Street and onto the other neighbor's property. According to Randall, he has no issues. He was there at different points throughout the summer and he is pleased with what work they had done to mitigate that. And I'm satisfied with that because that was the greatest issue of all. Now, some of the other issues, including the culvert, are kind of minor compared to what's coming onto the city or the town street. So that I'm satisfied with. The neighbor, according to an email I read, also had an issue with boulders that were placed on the driveway going up and on the front side of the property. And the pretty big boulders. And I think he's afraid that they, they might start rolling down, come over into his property and crash into his house or garage. I think maybe an earthquake might do that, but I think the chances of those boulders moving is pretty slim. And a lot of people have boulders on their property. So that, to me, is not an issue. One thing that is not the Planning Board's purview is a so-called trailer that's on the site. Now, whether he's living in it, I don't know, and that's not our department. That's the Building Department to determine if he's living in that trailer. And the trailer is not allowed in that district. Trailers aren't allowed in town, period, I don't believe. So if he has an issue with whether he's leaving there, that's the Building Department's call, not ours. As far as the budget's concerned, I had no response on a couple of emails I made to the interim accountant after Vicki Morrow and Joy Saipack left. So I haven't any idea what kind of funds the Planning Board still has left. I'm reasonably certain we have enough to cover some of this consulting going forward with Mr. Harris, but I don't know how far I can go with the bylaw work until I know exactly what we have. And that could interrupt the bylaw review unless the Finance Board or this board or we can request some sort of continuing funds because we were cut completely out of the budget back in 2014 or '15 because at that time, there was a lot of growth going on, subdivisions, which we pick up $2,500, $3,000. We had solar fields, we had some good application revenue coming in. That's all kind of leveled off, so now the pot is decreasing. So in order to go forward with a lot of this work, we may have to come to you folks to find out a way on how to, how to fund us and keep us going. Plans for the next few months again, keep going with the bylaw revisions and bring something to town meeting in 2022. Long-term issues, I know it's a pie in the sky wishful thinking, but it'd be nice to have a town planner department, but I don't think that's going to happen given our resources here in town. But the, this board should seriously consider either through the Planning Board, an ongoing consultant that it would be separate from some of the issues that we have to deal with as a board, to consider a consultant to help with the ongoing planning that's going to be going on in this town for years to come because right now, the voluntary board that we have is asked to do a lot with the master plan, probably 80% of it, maybe more than 80% of it. They're asked to continue on and do things with the open space and recreation plan. We're asked to monitor, as the Stormwater Management Authority in town, monitor people that have stormwater systems in place with inspections and stuff. Now, that's a lot to ask for a voluntary board. I'm not going to do it, I have no desire to do it. And I would not ask anybody on my board to take that on. There's, there's a lot of hours involved in that. And if, if all these expectations with the master plan and open space and stormwater have to be met, it certainly is going to be a slow process if the Planning Board is going to be asked to do those things. The main thing we need, and I'm speaking because it was on the Northampton Planning Board for 10 years, if a consultant is hired and they can prioritize and get things together in the order of priority and send us the packet and do the legwork, then the Planning Board can then set the public hearings and get the process moving. But to ask any one of people on my board, including myself, to sit down and start to, to put together a plan which would take hours to do. And as I said, I'm not up to it. I didn't, I didn't sign on for that. And because this town is so popular and as you've seen through the development in recent years, and it's probably only going to continue, that it's got, you need more time invested in it by either a consultant or a staff person of some sort. And just to, just to ensure that is the number of phone calls I get. I get more than I care to get. Emails, telephone calls from individuals, from realtors, from perspective this, perspective that, asking me questions about zoning, about building, about A&amp;Rs. And I'm saying, well, we have a Building Department and we have paid staff that should be answering these questions. But I'm getting to the point where, the reason I'm getting them is because people don't know where to go. The website, I don't think, has a clear understanding of where somebody is interested in a piece of property to get a definitive answer on what they can do with it, where to start. And it's with the Building Department and from there, things should, should branch out to the departments that they, and the boards that they should go to. So in addition to all the workload, I just told you that might be on the horizon for all the things people want completed. The phone calls and the emails are, again, something that, out of respect and courtesy to people, I answer them. If they need more than that, I have to return, refer them to the Building Department because I just, it's not my job.
Good, yeah, well, thanks for that, Paul. I think that's, has a valid comment. I think many people have found that our website is not the most user-friendly and some of the information just takes a long time to find. It may be there, it may not be there, but if it is there, it's often buried very deep and it's not very intuitive to find certain things. So one of the things on our agenda is to work on getting the, an upgrade of the website, but also to put in a different phone system, hopefully, that would be such where people would call Town Hall and then they could get routed to the Building Department or to the appropriate department rather than, you know, not knowing where to call. So we're looking at a couple of small improvements that may help that situation. Just back on a couple of things, back on the 32 High Street. So from what I'm understanding, you're not, from the Planning Board perspective, having any particular issues at the present time. And I think you said you were going to look at an extension for the permit that the gentleman has at your next meeting. And would that be like a six-month or a year-long or what would be the idea?
I'm not inclined, and I can't speak for the board because we haven't brought it up, but I'm not inclined on a year. But again, if this is all predicated on weather, who knows, six months and then he could go back again. But there gets to a point too, I'd rather go short period of time and then they come back with either another three months or six months, but it just can't keep going on and on and on because this site has had issues for many years now, all because they didn't follow the rules and regulations to begin with.
When they started.
So if somebody's trying to stretch me out, they're only going to stretch me out so far before the fines, hopefully I can find somewhere when there are general bylaws or whatever, that if it's not completed within an extension period, we don't want to go forward anymore, that the daily fines would start to kick in to get them to do some work or pay the price for it.
Right, okay, okay, yeah. But in terms of what work has been done, that's been done generally to your satisfaction?
Yes, I'm satisfied. Cindy can, has seen the emails also from their engineer. He updated me on all the things they have done. And I've requested pictures of the site unless we, that'll tell us a lot so we don't have to physically go up there and make an inspection site. A lot of times, people get a little ruffled because you want to go on their property and look at things, but I asked for pictures. But according to him, and it's his signature that is on all the plans, then if things aren't completed, then he's on the hook as well.
Right.
So I don't know if he would, his license on the line for that.
And one other one from mine, and Mr. Harris will be on call with you for how long in terms of his contract?
As needed. You know, right now, he's on board for the bylaws. He is on board when we have like subdivisions or any other consulting work that the applicant would pay for. It wouldn't be coming out of our budget. So if we need him for any other work regarding stormwater permits, say a solar field came in and reviewing plans on any big project, then it's, the applicant would be charged his fee. It wouldn't be coming out of our pocket. His contract right now going forward- pocket. His contract right now, going forward, is strictly right now for bylaws. And any, you know, odds and ends, an inconsequential question, we might have a phone call, stuff like that.
Sure. Okay. Anybody else have some questions you'd like to ask? Yeah.
I have a couple of questions, Paul. I'm glad to hear you talk about 32 High Street because we've gotten a lot of emails about it. So if you're satisfied for now and that with the weather, it makes sense to have an extension. But there was an email that said that the Select Board, requesting the Select Board to do something. Is that still a request?
No, I didn't make that request, and I don't know how it got that far because I don't think it's in your realm to deal with this because we issued the permit and we're the authority for that permit. I don't see, I don't see the reason why someone would ask you to act on it.
Okay. I can clarify if you would like, because I was there for that meeting. I don't believe Paul was there for that meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That planning board took action. They requested, they were unsure about the process. The neighbors were at the meeting. They had already, this is also a concern for Conservation Commission. They had gone to Conservation Commission, had not received the answers that they were looking for to their questions about what was going to do to mitigate future issues with the property because it had affected this neighbor's property financially. They had to do a lot of cleanup due to the runoff. And so this property is issues for Conservation Commission, for Planning Board, Board of Health potentially, if they're living on a trailer, and the building department. So I think there was just a lot of confusion about where do these neighbors get answers to all of these questions because they're getting shifted from one board to the next board and everyone's giving, telling them, go see them, we're fine here with them. So that's why we said, the suggestion was thought to have a meeting with representatives from all, each of the boards to have a discussion where their stance is on the property and to address that with the citizens, the neighbors who are concerned because they just felt very concerned about this property and didn't really have any answers to their questions.
Does the building department aware of the trailer?
I believe so.
I believe they are.
Okay, so they're dealing with that part of it?
Could be, yes.
You know, when you were talking about the website and all that, it seems like it would be really helpful to have a, you know, page in the website that says, if I need X, I would contact, you know, building department, you know, highway department, whatever. It seems like that, you know, aside from the phone system because people don't know who to contact for what, I think. I didn't know if you want to say something, but I just have two other questions.
Yeah, I was just going to add to that. I think, you know, just to clarify here, Joey's point about the neighbors being concerned, at the same time, I think Paul's point is very clear that the planning board has a certain jurisdiction and that's their charge. That's what they're supposed to do. The same with CONCOM. If anything, CONCOM is even, maybe even narrower because they're really focused on wetlands. So if it's a wetland issue, CONCOM will get involved. If it's not a wetland issue, I wouldn't expect them to, you know, get involved in other issues. So I think, I can see where it can be frustrating, but I think we have to also understand the limitations and the authority of each of the boards that are involved.
Well, had I been at that meeting, I would not, I would not have recommended to come to this board with it because I didn't see the need for it.
Okay. The other thing I just want to ask is, do your bylaws have to be reviewed by our attorney also?
Yep.
Okay, so is that an expense that's budgeted for?
It's an expense.
Okay. But it's part of what we accommodate in terms, because we've got a lot of bylaws being reviewed by them, okay.
Yeah, because anything, excuse me, anything that comes from the bylaws goes, before it goes on the warrant, has to be approved by them, correct?
Correct.
Yes. And the last question is, gonna be by writing, oh, we just got an expense report that goes up through the 21st of October. Is that some information that the planning board can have in terms of the balance of their line item?
I can send them the end of year balance from '21 because that's a revolving account that he's referring to, so.
You've got two accounts, yeah.
Right. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's changed a lot since then, but those revolving accounts haven't been updated into the '22 report yet. But I can send that out. I'll send the end of year report out to you, Paul.
Because a lot of people have been asking about, for the revolving accounts, the balances.
Actually, we have three accounts. We have a revolving, a regular account, and a peer review account. Peer review is strictly, yeah, peer review is strictly peer. It has, it's money that comes in and money goes out. Revolving is pretty much what we operate on, plus another smaller account.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So implementation of master plan, open space, rec, and affordable housing, is that through, is the planning board overlooking that through their permitting process or when they're reviewing the bylaws?
Reviewing the bylaws. When, like, when housing gets together, they're working on it now, something will come forward. And they want to attend our meetings coming up. When it gets to that section in the bylaws, they want to be involved in that. Like stormwater, we had the MS Forest stormwater came in and we had to add that to our existing stormwater. So anything pertaining to, you know, what we currently have in zoning from any committee or other board, try to put it all together. And I might add that with this new set of bylaws going out, it was Larry Smith suggesting, I don't think Richard will have any different view on it, is that currently in some of the site plan review and special permits, zoning board is the authority. And going forward to streamline the process, it's going to be, planning board is going to have the authority on that. But of course, that'll be all voted. And ZBA is on board. They've been coming to some of the meetings too with that. So it'll take some of the burden off of ZBA, but it'll also streamline the process for site plan, special permit, whatever, in one meeting rather than having, going to board for this and a board for that and a board for whatever to try to get their permit.
Good. I think, too, with the bylaws, if you want to mention that, Francine?
Yeah, you know, through the budget process this year, to the town clerk's office, we purchased a bylaw indexing codification system called E360. And it's for the general town bylaws, and it also covers the zoning bylaws. So that process will be, I think, streamlined somewhat. We're looking forward to, you know, them organizing it in a way so that people can find the information that they're looking for rather easily based on the codification process.
Could you send me an email on that and then I can forward that to Richard Harris just to make sure that he's aware of it too and it'll, you know, correlate with what he's doing?
Okay.
He might be familiar with it from Southhampton, too.
Oh, I'm sure.
I wouldn't be surprised that they also do it. But it should be, I mean, it won't really get going for a good six months or so, but I mean, I think they, they will help just put things in a logical order. And I think it's going to be searchable by keyword and things like that. So it ought to be a whole lot more user-friendly.
They don't write the bylaws for you. I mean, we still have to produce our own. Our attorneys have to agree to it.
Correct.
But they put it in a form and a format that's more user-friendly.
I'll ask him about that because he did, he did mention reformatting the old one we had. So, yeah.
That may not be worth his time, actually, but we'll, Francine, send you what you've got.
I'll send you what I have.
Sure.
That may be extra work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. If not, thanks, Paul. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you for your service.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. How about the planning, no, the Park Commission, sorry, Mark Reed? Evening.
Mark Reed from Park Commission. Just run through the email that I sent out. I must admit, I did this really quickly. And reading it again, I see I have some issues with my own email. But the current priorities and activities, basically, we have five that are listed that are, we are constantly working on. The Angel Heart statue at Crossroads Park, and that is a statue that when, for families that have lost children, they can apply to have their names put on a placard. So that's an ongoing thing that as we get enough names, which is sometimes not a good thing.
Not the goal.
But to be able to add those to the memorial. So that's, that's ongoing. And that's, it's a, it's a real pretty statue. And Jackie Sears really worked very hard on getting that done. And there's a lot of things we want to do to it, to improve it as time goes on with a walkway and some other things to enhance it. But again, between budget and...
Just interrupt, could you, just for people who may not know, new people in town, just tell them where it is?
So Crossroads, Crossroads Park is on Helen Drive. It's between Helen Drive, if you go down from College Highway down Helen Drive, it's on the right-hand side between where Palm Roy Meadow Road Extension comes and greets Helen Drive.
Thanks.
It's a nice little, small park. Basically, it's the only thing in there at the time. There's some benches and it's got a beautiful view to the east of the mountains. And it's, you know, it's a pretty passive area that people can sit and reflect. Next thing that we've been working on quite heavily this year, this summer anyways, is the pickleball courts. As you know, pickleball has grown very much in Southampton. We were successful on getting CPA monies to build courts. Unfortunately, when we went out to bid, we didn't have enough monies. Through a lot of work by Janet Kane and others, a big fundraiser option was undertaken, and we were able to gain the monies that we needed, approximately about $25,000 short through donations and work. That's currently, if you go out to the Conant Park near the pavilion, you'll see the base asphalt and the fence posts being installed. It's unfortunately, because of the weather conditions, we can't, or most likely, can't say can't, but who knows, complete it this fall. We were very hopeful that we could complete it this fall. But the next phase of it, after it was paved, it had to sit, the pavement had to sit for 30 days approximately, for all the asphalt to cure. But now we're into cold weather. And in order to put the membrane and the painting and finish the project, it has to be 50-degree temperatures. And that's not just 50-degree temperature for a few hours during the day. It has to be 24 hours. So as most of you know, people are putting on their heat and it's getting cold. So we're still hopeful, but time will tell. But it may have to wait till spring. Labree Field, that's been a project that has been ongoing in town for over 10 years. And it gets used very heavily by the community in baseball and soccer, in other groups that want to use it. We are still working on design and plans for the construction of the field house. The last components of it was to build a field house that would have bathrooms and a playground, a small playground area. Again, with a lot of help from Ed on all our projects. We went out to bid for that job in 2019, I think it was, or '18?
It was in '18.
In '19.
Probably '19.
Yeah, it was before COVID. And I lose time because of that. Bids came back and we were $100,000 over budget. So we're in the process of trying to figure out how we can accomplish something there to finish the project. So that's an ongoing project that we got going. The Park Grant, that is a matching grant that the town received. It's a $200,000 project. The state is giving us $100,000 and the town has to match the other $100,000. We're going to be requesting CPA monies for it. That is for ADA compliant trails and walkways at Conant Park. And a, what everyone has been requesting is a water park or splash pad.
Splash pad.
We're finding that that's going to be very difficult for lots of different reasons to put in a splash pad. One is the amount of water that it takes to run a splash pad is tremendous and a tremendous cost. So we're meeting tomorrow night and kind of brainstorming. Chris has been helping us a lot with trying to come up with some plans and thoughts. One avenue is to see if through a request through Ed, that we can just do the ADA trails and not necessarily do the water splash pad. But early on, it was kind of to the point where that was a focus that the state was pushing and pushing the splash pads. But personally, I don't see how $200,000 is going to cover a splash pad. And then it relates to ongoing costs of the water, ongoing maintenance of it. There's lots of different things that roll into, to the whole aspect of it. The other thing that we've had requests, we've, is to upgrade the playground equipment at Conant Park. The playground equipment is very old. We have one play scape equipment that is in the main area where all the other equipment is that's newer. All of, all of the equipment, playground equipment is, doesn't meet state requirements for ADA accessibility. And it really needs to get upgraded. So we're trying to come up with some way of getting funds to do that. Unfortunately, most of our funds are through CPA, to be honest with you, or if we're lucky to get a grant for that. So that's a activity and projects that we got going. The budget spending and status and concerns, we have a $2,000 budget that covers the electric bills, water bills, just to run the bathrooms, because we pay the water department, like every other department in town, to use water in town. And all our other, like I mentioned, all our other funds, either are CPA or state grants. Timeframe for getting funds makes it very difficult to complete a project because there's a process of going out, preparing plans. You have to have full design plans in order to go out to bid to meet the state requirements. Well, you have to hire someone to do those plans. And we don't have that type of monies to do that. So it's a tough thing to get something going. And then by the time you go through the process and everyone's having the same problem with the cost of everything and the availability of everything, it's, what you thought was going to be $10 is now $100. So it's, it's a challenge. As you, I'm sure you know by other departments and other, in your own personal lives. The Park Commission has five members who are voluntary. This is where I made a mistake. In the past, we've had only four members. We do have a full board. Janet Kane was appointed by the Select Board to fill that vacancy until next spring. So we do have a five-member board right now. But, you know, as you all know, it's difficult to get people to volunteer. But, you know, as you all know, it's difficult to get people to volunteer for any board. Plans, events for the next six months, as I mentioned, the pickleball court, I had put the end of November, or December, it looks like probably April. Park Grant, we're working on. Labrie Field, continuing to figure out how we can get that thing done after all this time, so that we don't have to rely on porta potties. Long-term issues, again, like everything, funding for projects is always an issue. Suggested tools and resources to help do your job more efficiently and cost-effective. I heard Paul talking about staff members. And, you know, again, we're all volunteers and have limited time. But if we're going to start developing the parks to have a splash pad, or have this building and have this improvement, somebody's going to have to maintain those. And Randall, or the highway department, there's no way that he can do that without additional staffing and budget. There's just no way. And, you know, try to get people to volunteer for the board and, you know, even volunteer in general. We've had some people that have volunteered to help us, just not beyond the board, but just because they're interested in what we're doing, which is great. We will take all the help we can get.
Very good. Yep. Good. Okay. Good. Any questions? Yeah, is there any?
I have a question, but this is really helpful to, and there's a lot going on. There's a lot with Park that's probably busier than I think you've been in a long time. There was a question when Labrie Field came up, that it was, there were user fees from outside groups traveling, you know, soccer teams and all that.
Yes.
Are you collecting user fees and is it going towards, back into your account? Or is it being used to pay for like porta potties and things like that?
No, actually, we have a policy, it's on the website, that all the users review and approve. We get user fees. Currently, the requirement is that the users, whether it be SYAA or Hampshire United, pay for the porta potties. So that doesn't come out of our budget as of right now. That's the way it's working. But we have collected, there are different tier criterias depending on whether you're a resident in town. There's a fee for, if you're a resident. If you're a non-resident, then it's a higher fee. If you're, depending on the age, we have adults. We used to have an adult men's baseball team that used Labrie Field every Sunday morning. So they pay a different fee. And yes.
And who handles scheduling?
For the most part, the biggest users are SYAA and Hampshire United. They schedule. We request getting a copy of that from them. We have had some conflicts that we had to work through this fall because there's not only soccer, which is a huge number of children that play soccer, but there's fall baseball. So we had a conflict in that aspect of it. And we had to get them to resolve the use. Because our opinion, and my personal opinion, is that the parks are for everyone to use, not just one group. So we try to accommodate everyone.
Thanks.
But it becomes sometimes difficult. So we have to put their heads together and-
Yeah, very good. Just if I can clarify, just one thing on the Park Grant, since I was involved in the part of this anyway, in terms of the grant application, it's actually, from the state's point of view, it's not actually a matching grant, it's a reimbursable. So they get very sensitive when we use the word matching, but it's actually a reimbursable grant. So we have to have the money and get, you know, put in receipts and then we get reimbursed for it, basically. That's how that works. And then I know members of the commission have been meeting with water commissioners and I don't know if they've met with Randall or not, but they've been meeting with people in Parks and Rec in East Hampton and other places to try and get answers to some of the questions that were answered, asked.
Yes.
Which I think are all very valid questions. And so hopefully, they will have their ammunition ready to come to the meeting. I don't think they're ready to give up on it yet. And I think it may end up being a more scaled-down version, and it wasn't ever going to be that big in the first place, but it may still be something smaller. I don't get the sense, and I don't know, Eddie may know, I don't get the sense that we could just say, well gee, we can't do this, so, we can't do the splash pad, so can we still have the grant anyway? I think the answer would be no to that, would be my assumption.
I have the same opinion.
So we risk losing the whole thing. But just to also clarify one thing on this, that the way this grant is structured is that the first six months of the grant is only for final design work. There's no construction, nothing can start construction-wise before July of next year. So in some ways, that does give more time, if you will, to get more precision-
Right.
-on some of the responses to the questions. So with a little luck, maybe that'll pull through. I'm not sure.
An important part of this is that the sole reason, well, the primary reason that we're having a town meeting, special town meeting, prior to the end of the year as opposed to afterwards, when we'd get free cash, or if I know that, is because of this Park Grant. So I think that it's important that if anything changes because of this, that, you know, somehow it's decided that, you know, it's not doable, or something, that's going to be an important thing to remember.
Sure.
Yeah, well CPC's meeting on the November 3rd, I think.
Yes.
Right. So that's when it'll come up. So hopefully, they'll have their, Ducks and Rowan can answer the questions and make a convincing argument to keep this going.
November 3rd's next week, just so you remember.
Right, no. It's coming fast.
It's coming fast.
Yeah. Francie, question?
Just a question about the delay on the pickleball court.
Sure.
Have we held back money until the project was completed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I don't think we've paid anything to the contract.
I was just going to say the same thing. I don't remember seeing a invoice for anything to this point in time.
Yeah, most definitely, they won't get paid until the job's done and completely.
So we probably have to do an extension of the contract with-
Of the contract, yes.
We'll definitely have to do an extension on the contract.
Yes.
At least for the date of completion.
Right. And so even if, even if the painting part can't be done now, would they still finish the fencing part, do you think, or not?
I would have to check into that. I don't know the answers to that. They may not be able to because, because the painting and the material that they lay down goes all the way to the edge of the asphalt, which is beyond the fence limits.
Will William Cannon be there tomorrow night?
I don't know. I can check and ask him.
Okay, because I think I remember seeing in one of the emails from Noons to Bill, that Vermont Recreational had said that they could do the fencing as long as they left it up, like half an inch or something like that, that they would still be able to do the surfacing out and beyond the fence. But Bill can confirm that.
Right, yeah. And I'll check with him. One of my questions, and I'm not really clear on the Park Grant, and it's PAC-
Right.
Not with a K, Grant. Is the timeframe for the, getting the project completed? It was my understanding that it was a very short timeframe?
Two-year project, I believe.
Is it two years?
Yeah.
I thought so.
Okay, okay. Okay. Well, that's good.
Year and a half for sure. Maybe, I think it's two though. But the first part has got to definitely be just focused on design.
Because, you know, with anything that goes through CPA, first you have to get it on a town warrant, and then you got to get it approved by town meeting and, you know, that process, so.
Right, yeah, okay. I see a member of the audience might have a question. Is that true?
I'm kind of running this off.
Okay. Would you come up to the podium, please, and introduce yourself?
I'm not sure I'm ready for that.
Well, it's okay. But just tell us your name and where you're from.
I'm Brett. I'm, uh-
Just one, so we can hear you otherwise on the recording. Sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm new to this town.
Great.
And I'm very new to a meeting like this. I guess to backtrack-
What's your name, please?
Oh, sorry. Brett Petruskevich.
Okay. And where do you live, more or less?
What's that?
What street or road?
I'm on 167 Glendale Road.
Okay. Okay, there we go.
I'm that guy, yeah. Yeah, yes, I am. That's why I'm here, but I'm interested in all of what's going on right now. The original gentleman was up here when I walked in. It stated some comments about the website. And I, I mean, I have to disagree. I think the website's great. I've had nothing but good luck calling in and I speak to somebody, whether it's one of you or somebody else, but they've been nothing but incredible when I talk to them. And everywhere I've tried to get to, I've gotten to. So my first disagreement is there. Besides that, the, and again, I have no idea how the process works, the splash park seems strange to me for a town like this, especially with the comments about the fields that have been incomplete, from what I understood anyways. And maybe there's a grant process to that. I don't know. I don't. But it seems like a splash park is-
I'll just throw in a word from the open space and recreation plan that was done, and also the community survey that was done last year, but mostly through the open space and recreation plan update. The number one reason that families said that they left town for recreation purposes was to go to a splash pad. So it's something that people go to. It's like the highest-
And it's considered a part of a climate resilience-
It's kind of a cooling station in the summertime for the kids.
Now, I guess I don't fully understand what the splash pad is. Is this like-
Very, it'd be good to come to the Parks Commission meeting.
I'm going to now. I'm going to now. This is my first one. I'm learning.
We'll get you in great news.
I'm interested.
Yeah. It's basically more or less a, I guess I would call it a concrete slab. It's got spigots of-
Sure. Just like what East Hampton has. Yeah, okay. So let me tell you this. My father works for the town of East Hampton.
Okay.
Right? He's in control of that entire department. Nobody goes there.
Uh-huh.
I mean, to be blunt.
Except for Southampton people.
Whoever's voting on this, okay. But besides that, nobody really goes there. It's not a thing, like, and that's a different town than East Hampton.
Yeah.
I lived in East Hampton, I lived in Northampton, I lived in Westhampton. I've been all the Hamptons.
All right.
This seems like a town that doesn't need that, in my opinion.
Okay.
And I guess I'm here to say that.
All right. You'll have your chance, when and if it comes up to town meeting as well?
Fair.
It would come up to a vote.
Fair. I feel like something like improving the soccer fields or the baseball fields, I think you said were 10 years and going? That seems like number one priority to me, as opposed, I have two kids. One is one and a half, one is three years old.
Well, we'll-
I don't think they need a splash park. I think they need a place to play.
I'll invite you to the Parks Commission meeting tomorrow night.
Well, to be clear, the process of trying to get the fieldhouse has not been 10 years long. Lots of money from CPA has gone into Labrie Fields to construct the entire thing. So now it's different stages of additional improvements. This is critical because of the use of bathrooms and storage and things like that.
Okay. And I'll be honest, I have very little knowledge of what I'm talking about right now. I'm just listening to what's been said tonight. I'm just, I guess you forced me to voice my opinion here, all right?
There you go. Thanks for your input. Good to meet you. So thanks for coming.
And welcome to town too. It's a great place to raise kids.
Yeah, I love it. I absolutely, I, just today, in fact, I encouraged somebody to move over to this. I absolutely love Southampton. We're not leaving here. So I'm here for 20 years and-
There you go.
Well, there's lots of volunteer opportunities, just so you know.
I'm interested.
From trail maintenance to park help, contact Mark, you know, you can help with parks there.
Yeah.
All right, I'm learning.
Good.
All right. Your meeting tomorrow night is what time?
6:00 PM tomorrow night. We meet around the corner in the break room, unless there's a lot of people, then we come in here.
Yeah. The Parks Commission.
The Parks Commission.
Their actual meeting, yeah. Okay.
Thanks a lot, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. All right, let's keep on moving here. We've got a few reports. So Jim Ceni, Housing Authority, please.
Housing Authority is looking for some volunteers also. I have nothing but free time.
Especially with two little kids, right?
Yeah. They're second nature.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Jim Ceni, High Street, Housing Authority. Want to apologize for my appearance. I had the poor timing of going to my optometrist before coming here, so I'm dilated. And it's still pretty bright in here.
Do you drive for that?
Well, in the dark, it's okay, but it's the light still.
Oh, I know.
I mean, it's close to Halloween, right? So if I took the glasses off, the pupils would scare all your viewers.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. So Housing Authority is very active right now, thanks to some, we're small, but we're mighty. We're a board of five, but we only have three members presently. We're looking for more members. But the three that we have, particularly, I'm the chair, but I really receive a lot of support and a lot of good expertise from our two members. And so we're doing great things, collaborating with the planning board on looking at how we can create more affordable and what I call increasing on the affordable end of the price point, housing in town. And so, you know, not just, certainly affordable as HUD defies affordable, but also including what many folks call starter homes, and I don't know if we invented this or not, but something called finisher homes, which are for folks who are getting on in age and want to downsize into something that is more suitable to their lifestyle. There's not a lot of that housing stock in town. So that's been our focus. And how we get there, it's a long process. So I sent the report. I'm not going to read it verbatim, but I will want to say that, you know, we certainly have shorter-term goals that I believe and our board believes feeds our longer-term goals. So our longer-term goals, again, are focusing on creating these, a greater stock of the lower or affordable end of the housing price point. If you think of it as, you know, housing prices as a continuum, down the finisher-starter, and then in the HUD-defined affordable end, we're really short in town. And so we're looking to expand that. That's our obvious, I think, longer-term goal. Short-term, how do we get there? We need something called, it'd be really advantageous to have a housing trust in Southampton. The housing trust will function just as the name implies. It's a trust that allows, allows us to have some money that's set aside that can be used quickly, it's liquid, to purchase property, to purchase lots that can help us promote affordable housing. And when you have it in a trust, any kind of ownership of a property or whatnot doesn't fall, the liability doesn't fall on the town or its citizens, it's with the trust. So it's a great tool. It's not a new tool, it's just new to Southampton. So creating that housing trust, which will very much involve you folks as the select board, that's one of our goals. Part of creating a housing trust and creating a roadmap for where we want to go with creating this expanded housing stock in town is something called a housing production plan. That's also something that comes highly recommended to us. Other towns that have success in mapping out how they're going to steer the town toward creating this housing stock, has had a housing production plan. We're grateful for a DDLTA, I think that's the acronym, grant, which has brought in Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, which has been extremely helpful in creating a housing production plan. And in creating that housing production plan, it's absolutely essential, as we not only create an HPP, but as we move forward in this process, is constantly and continuously engaging the citizens of this town in what it is they're looking for. We do have anecdotal feedback. We've heard from some seniors, for example, who say, you know, "I can't afford to live in my big old farmhouse anymore, but I sure like to stay in Southampton, but there's nothing in the, there are no smaller units for me that I can afford." Same on the other end of that age spectrum, you know, folks in their 20s and maybe even 30s, first-time homebuyers, who say, "I'd love to live in Southampton," or "I grew up here and I want to stay, but I can't afford to stay." So that's kind of the feedback you hear in the street. But thanks to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, we have Ms. Palmer with us, and Ms. Tishman and Chair Fowles, you guys were all really helpful in the NPIC, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, in creating that survey that went out. The response rate was huge. I don't know, I'm so proud of the work that that committee did and that survey that went out, because our response rate just blew away the expectations. The folks at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission were astounded at the response rate. You know, I'm not a stats guy, but I think in statistics, you know, if you can get like a 3% or 5% response rate, you're hitting it. Well, we hit almost 10, I think. Well, we hit almost 10, I think. So that's provided some really good feedback, what the citizens are looking for. But we're not stopping there. So in the development of the HPP, we are soliciting town engagement sessions. We've been doing it, we've been conducting it by Zoom. We feel right now with COVID, even though it doesn't allow us to come together and have that sense of collegiality in that sense, we're finding that through Zoom. We are building, we're getting response. We get a good number of folks. We've had one session already in these Zoom meetings, which again, Ken Comia has been great from PVPC. We've had breakout sessions. And so we're getting good feedback from the citizens that way of what they're looking for in a housing production plan. We're going to have a second session in November. And I'm really feeling confident that the ongoing process of engaging the citizens as we go through this is well underway with both the NPIC survey and now these two Zoom group sessions that are facilitated by PVPC in creating that citizen input and hopefully build some citizen input or interest, not only in what we're trying to do, but also maybe we'll get some members for our board. We are related to that. The current members are scanning the town address list. We're just trying to target some, we're trying to make some targeted marketing towards folks who might be interested in Housing Authority membership, just because we think it's really important that we get back up to five members. Because right now, we all have to be in attendance to reach a quorum and keep things rolling. Just looking quickly, I did put under budget concerns, you know, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I don't know the exact figures, but it's, we do have representation now on the Housing Authority, a member of the Housing Authority on the CPA. So we, that's an important piece. My understanding is there are some pretty good, there's a pretty good amount of funds there, and it's time to start utilizing those funds. So I'm not so worried about budget. I mean, you can never have enough money, but I think we can fund that housing trust pretty readily, once we get it built and set up the appropriate way. So it's a strange way in these times or any time to say, "I'm not too worried about money." But I'm almost afraid to say that publicly, but I'm not too worried about money right now. But I must confess my ignorance on a lot of things, so you folks will certainly school me if my, you know, my perspective needs to change. So, I mean, that's pretty much summarizes, you know, we have our four to six month is really looking at, again, creating a housing production plan, creating a housing trust that has members that are active and involved. And I think over the next four to six months, with our collaboration with the planning board, Paul has been wonderful, and he's found some, two members of the board who've joined us, and Sarah and Dan, and they've been terrific additions. So I think that collaboration, I think we can get some, a good start anyway, on looking at how we can rethink our zoning in town that will promote more options for folks as far as housing that fit their price range. So again, that's our short term. Longer term, we're looking at building that housing stock for folks.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah.
Couple of questions.
Sorry if that was a bit of a ramble or?
No, that's good. Yeah. Go ahead, ready? Yeah, I've got a couple, too.
I'm the representative from this committee to the Community Preservation Committee. And I was also, for a period of time, going to the Housing Authority meetings, as you might remember, Jim.
Oh, yes.
And so there were a lot of efforts that were trying to be made through Habitat, for Manatee, to try to use CPA funds, you know, one of them's historical, one of them's housing, one of them's open space and recreation, the other one's undesigned. So a certain pot of money goes into housing every single year, and so it has built up. But just to remember that a year or two ago, there was a proposal, a citizen petition to reduce the surcharge, because people don't like to have money be piling up in an account that is a surcharge on the taxes. So I think that using that money would be very, very good to do, and it's a challenge in our town that tends to have a higher median income to try to, you know, get affordable housing, but it's completely needed. A lot of people have had to leave this town because of inability to find housing. So I applaud your, you know, enthusiasm and efforts, but I think using the money is really important.
Yes.
In terms of the future of CPA at 3% in this town.
And to that point, I think that's why it's imperative to establish the housing trust.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Exactly. Because that's going to be the vehicle to allow that money. You're absolutely right.
And I think we've all seen properties that have come on the market and they're gone like that, you know, and they might have been, you know, an appropriate location or size for, you know, something to go along with the strategy that you're proposing here.
Right. In fairness to previous members of this board, before me, there were some attempts to actually try to purchase some properties, or lots, to try to create, because you can, if you can find a lot, and then you could collaborate with Habitat to build something up.
Yeah, right.
But by the time, because the market is always hot in this town, by the time you could, you know, you have to, there's a process, I understand, which I don't understand fully, but to spend the town money, you know, you have to go through town meeting and et cetera, the trusts will circumvent that, because it's a trust. It's, circumvents not the right word. It dedicates.
Yeah.
Expedite the process.
Expedite is a better word. Yes, yes.
I think one of the things that you mentioned here in the long term thing, it looks like you're going to be working on or are already working on a lot of the bylaws, zoning bylaws and things as well, through your work with planning and with PVPC, because I think that's going to be, you know, challenging, too, in terms of having different kinds of things. You've mentioned the inclusionary.
Right.
Housing bylaw, right? I think that's in here, which I believe we have, but it's not terribly enforceable or it needs updating, at least from what I've heard about it. So it looks like that's on your agenda as well, from what I've seen.
Yes, I, thanks, Chris, for bringing that up. I neglected to mention the inclusionary bylaw and the review of that. Thank you. Because that is, I would say that's another four to six month. I think it's very doable to look at in the very short term, to relook at how, you know, the provisions that that's laid out in that bylaw, and how can we maybe tweak it to increase the opportunities for affordable housing in town? Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
But it sounds like, too, with the work you're doing with PVPC and Ken Comia, and then now this consultant that the planning board has, I mean, it seems like all of you together.
Yes.
Will have the right mix of expertise and understanding to maybe make it, you know, something more workable and actually something more viable than it has been, I think, at this point. I just had one other question, which was related, of course, back to the CARES Act, because we had allocated some funds to the Housing Authority for assistance with mortgage, mortgages or rent, especially, I guess, for folks that were behind on their rent, if they needed assistance on that. And has there been any movement on that, or is there just no interest? I mean, what's your assessment of that?
I would say the most accurate, you gave three, you said movement, interest or need. I would say there's been no interest.
Yeah.
Whether there's a need or not, and folks aren't coming forward, I'm not sure, but we're trying to republicize that, the availability of those funds, because people may have forgotten. But so far, the report from my point of, our point of contact at the agency we contracted with, Janet Tetrow, is that there hasn't been any calls from Southampton. There might have been a couple, but see, it works on a tiered approach. So there's already funds that are available from the state to help with renters. It's called RAFD funds. And there's a similar acronym for those who are mortgage payers. So those funds were already added to and pumped up by the state in the time of COVID. So the availability of RAFD funds has increased. And so that's where, when someone calls in saying, "Look, I'm having trouble with my rent," and they call in to Community Action, that's the agency, they start with those funds first. And then if the person calling is not eligible for those funds, then they say, "Oh, now we have another resource, which we haven't had, and it's these CARES Act funds." Being that other resource, there's been very few calls for rental assistance, surprisingly, but when they've come in, the RAFD funds have been able to meet them. So long story short, we haven't used any of those CARE funds. I don't regret that we requested for funds and some funds were put in there. It wasn't a huge amount of money.
Six thousand, I believe.
Yeah, it was six grand. I think we have to use it by December 31st, unless that's extended.
That's my, that would be my question. If they're driving people towards using the RAFD funds, is there a time limit for the RAFD funds? Wouldn't they prioritize the funds that have a time limit on them?
That's a good question, but I don't have an answer to that. I, I don't know.
No reaches happening. I mean, I would go over and put a notice on the mail, you know, on the mail slots of the apartment, you know, behind Cumberland, like, I just hope we're getting to the people that we want to get to, as opposed to waiting for people to call up and say, "Help." Like, there's lots of ways to get the word out to people that are most likely eligible. And I hope they're, you know, whoever is doing what they need to do to get that word out.
So we did have a discussion about this very issue at one of our recent meetings, and we were going to, you know, target some areas, just as you're describing, because we have the same concerns, is that people are not aware. You know, it's, we made sure it was aware, you know, posted on our town website, et cetera.
Big Y, Cumberland Farms, like.
Well, some of those places are not willing to let us post things. We found that out when, it's a good, because that was my go-to, right? There would be a lot of traffic there.
Yeah.
Some of those businesses, and they have their reasons, but they limit the kind of, you know, public postings like that, because that would be an obvious.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, to the extent that you can try to, keep on getting the word out, I mean, we're at a point now where we're trying to reprogram funds available. And so to the extent that they're not being used, it's a matter of how long can we leave them sit out there, rather than not use them? So I think that's a.
Right. They could fall victim to a sweep, you know, and that's what happens. Part of me is, I agree with everything you're saying, but I also think that if you, I've been following the national news, you know, a little bit about, you know, now folks are worried about fears of inflation or whatnot, but we've really, through, you know, checks that families are getting with kids and whatnot, that there's been, the COVID response has been pretty strong as far as hitting the revenue side for folks, getting them extra monies and et cetera, people who, extending unemployment, providing unemployment for folks who in the past weren't eligible, if they were, you know, like gig workers or whatever. So that could explain some of the reason that these funds haven't been used. I can also say, in talking to Community Action, that the response is pretty typical across the region. It's not just Southampton that's not finding use for these CARE funds.
Okay.
Even some of our larger towns, you know, Amherst, which is a heavily rental town, they're using it, but not at the rate that they expected. So I think it's a combination thing of how, you know, at all levels of government, you know, the federal, state and local have been justifiably concerned about the economic impacts of this pandemic and have been, you know, quite proactive in making sure people can, you know, essentially shelter in place.
Yeah.
That has, that has made a difference. It was only recently that the eviction moratorium ended. You know, I was reading in the paper recently that a lot of folks, they expected, they still can't get people to go back to work, and people are figuring out a new way. So it's, I don't know, we could talk for hours about maybe why it hasn't been used.
Yeah, right.
But to your point, I agree. There's nothing, there's, definitely want to keep promoting that, because it would be a shame if someone.
It may be a good question, though, following up on Joy's comment, to touch base with the Community Action people and just say, "Look, you know, we realize you've got this other fund or other funds out there. However, this pot of money is time limited. It's used or it's gone." And see if that makes any difference to them in terms of how they might allocate funds. I don't know if they're even getting people in from Southampton, but it just, might just give them a different perspective, that the fact is, you know, this is not, it's the first time we've ever done it, so people are not used to Southampton, maybe even having these kind of funds. But at the same time, if they don't get used, then that's a shame, because they would need to be, you know, turned back and/or, it would prevent some other department in town from using them, too.
Well, I think we are at the point where, I think a date has to be.
I think so, too.
Like, November 15th or something, if the money's not used, because right now, they're, they're giving, like, they're getting turkey dinners from the drive-up place, Good Eats to Go.
Good Eats to Go, yeah.
So, I mean, and the community cupboard, cupboard, obviously, so there's a lot of ways to help people with food and other things, but I just feel like that money's not going to be used if it hasn't been used for all this time, that we might need to come up with a date. Because right now, we only have till the end of the year to use up any funds, and like Chris said, it's being reallocated.
Well, so you're answering a question I had. When the money's allocated or designated by the town, it's not necessarily, it can be pulled and reallocated by the town. That's.
Yeah, it's already happened.
We're working on that tonight. That's a huge part of our agenda tonight, is where we are shifting money around within apartments that had more of a budget than you did, you know, lengthier budget. So shifting within that to cover any overages, but then if need be, new requests that have come in and/or funds that were never spent to actually try and use them. We don't want to leave any money on the table if we don't have to. So.
Well, I wasn't aware that you could pull it and move it before the date, that the town had that discretion. So that's good to know.
I know.
Because I agree. I don't think, I don't think, you know, it's money that, you know, we should take advantage of.
Yeah.
And if, if folks are truly not needing it, and we're, and the message is out there and it's just not needed, then absolutely, there's other folks in need.
I think, you know, take a stab at Community Action and just get their reaction, and if that isn't, if that's not possible to reprioritize these funds instead, then let us know. And, you know, I'd say within the next two to three weeks, we need to just say, "Okay, this is it."
Yeah. So I do have regular communications with Community Action. I don't always hear back from them quickly, but I'll send that tonight.
Okay.
And find that out, because, yeah, that's fair.
Great. Well, thanks for coming, Jim. We appreciate the, appreciate the report.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate everything you folks do. Thank you.
Is there a date for that November meeting yet?
Um.
The community one?
Yeah.
November 18th?
I'm just going to say, it's the 18th or 22nd.
You know what time?
I believe it was 18?
6:30, I think.
Yeah, it's at 6:30. Via Zoom.
Zoom, is it right?
Yes.
Yes.
And you'll get the word out on that as well?
Yeah.
Sounds good, yeah.
Okay.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale. I just want to add one tiny thing related to all of this you were just discussing. I'm the chairperson of the Alminers. We, too, have some money, and we have gone to lengths and bounds to try to advertise. We've called Community Action, we've posted, we've gone on the website, we've gone on the Robert Floyd newsletter, everything we can. And when we find a referral, we say, "Is this the only thing you can do?" And then we find out there's others, exactly what Jim is just saying, there's other social services that have been able to help the individual. And we're doing that same outreach that you're recommending with Community Action, and I've been in direct contact with their counselors regarding specific referral, but they have other resources. So just to add that.
Good to know.
And the other thing about Alminers, there's no time limit to it.
Right.
It's not like, it's not like this grant.
Unlike this.
And it's confidential, too. And it's confidential, too. It's all very confidential assistance.
Okay, moving on. I don't think we have anybody from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so we will catch them the next time around. We'll put them on the next round.
Did they contact you?
I did not hear back from anyone from them.
Okay. We will catch them the next round. Master Plan Implementation, I'm going to just do this very quickly as the chair. You've got it in your packets. Most of you have heard me talk about it over time. Obviously, the master plan was created back in 2012, 13, and it is posted on the town website under the master plan page. And over time, it always needs to be updated, and we took on that activity last year, basically during COVID. The Master Plan Implementation Committee spent a good part of the year working on, not only reviewing the plan itself, seeing what was still relevant, but then going into the design of a community survey that Jim was referring to. And the bulk of the year was put into the design of a 20 or so-question survey that was sent out to the town, both electronically and in hard copy. And as Jim said, we had a huge response. I think the percent was actually closer to 15%, if I'm not mistaken, something like that. It was almost 900 responses, 899 responses or something, out of a small town, which definitely surprised people. So, as a result of that, the plan essentially has resulted in an updated status report. So, now on the town website, again, on the master plan page, there is the implementation status report, which I would call Volume One, if you will. And that basically lists out all the strategies, goals and strategies of the master plan that have been achieved so far, as well as the continuing short-term goals that are probably a five-year timeframe. And those are all allocated per the eight chapters of the master plan, which are land use, housing, economic development, historic and cultural resources, open space and natural resources, public services and facilities, mobility and energy. So, on that first volume, if you will, that is supposed to be the real workable document, a living document, that the various committees and boards and commissions will be referring to. Partly, as Paul Deamon said, a lot of the tasks and strategies there have been allocated to the planning board, not only them, but they have a lion's share of many of the strategies that were recommended there. The second volume of it is really the longer-term goals that are probably more the plus-five-year to 10-year goals, so the midterm and longer-term goals are in the second volume, but both are on the town website, and I encourage anybody to take a look at them. But it's basically, the master plan in general is supposed to be a statement of the vision and the aspirations of the town residents. It's supposed to help us all manage growth and change in the community, and it's intended especially to be a resource for the townspeople, to see what people are thinking, and talk about any other ideas and regulations, bylaws, et cetera, that they might be willing to have and support. The budget part of this, there's probably costs going to be involved in implementing some of these strategies, but those are, in general, many of them have been outlined in that first volume, where if there are strategies to be done, then there has been some suggested resources there for grants, community preservation funds, or Pioneer Valley funds, to help perhaps fund a consultant or some other short-term assistance as needed. MPIC, just like everybody else, is of all-volunteer committee, comprises sick people from other town committees and groups, so there's a person representing Planning, Housing, Select Board, Concom, Historical, and Parks, along with four at-large seats. And presently, we have only six members. We are lacking a Parks representative and three other at-large members. So, other than maybe if Parks, now that they have a complete set of people, if they would like to appoint somebody to the master plan committee, we're not recommending at the moment to expand the committee and include new people at this point in time, because basically, each of the members that are on that committee have the responsibility to go back to what I'm calling their home committee and share the information that's discussed, and really push their own committees to take action on that. So, that's really sort of the role of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, is to be there, to be the resource, to be the nudge, to help the various committees try and get through the various strategies and do what they can to put them into action. And I think, just to say too, following up on some of the other discussion tonight, that, you know, there's a significant number of volunteers in town, serving on all sorts of boards and committees and commissions. I don't even know if we know how many, but there's got to be probably close to 100 people, I would say, in general, that might be volunteers throughout the town, in one way or another. And I think, over the last year, in spite of COVID, there's been a renewed energy in town, partly, I think the master plan survey helped kind of initiate some of that, was the catalyst for it, perhaps. But I think that, in general, as we've heard tonight from Planning and Housing, in particular, and Parks as well, I mean, there's been new ideas, new energy, new movement. I think oftentimes, we think that things kind of are at a stalemate, and not things that are really moving along very well, but I certainly have the impression that many things that had been on the back burner have really moved to the forefront and are really taking on a kind of new life. And, you know, the challenge, as has been said, is that because we're all volunteers, and we don't have the luxuries of some paid staff, like a part-time town planner, a conservation agent, you name it, there's various other people that have been mentioned about over time that we don't have on staff. It's very hard to keep the momentum going, and it's really going to take a lot of sustained effort and patience and support, I think, from all of the different committees, and especially Select Board, to help keep this momentum going. So, that's kind of my two cents worth on the Master Plan Committee, and thanks to everybody that was involved in that. That was just a Herculean effort last year.
Sure was. Thank you.
So.
Okay, any questions on that?
If not, well, it's been a long one, but we knew we had several reports tonight, so we'll keep on moving and see how well we can get through the balance of the agenda here. We do have the report scheduled for the next meeting, and I'm just going to put it out there for, let me not lie here, we have the November 1st, the meeting, first, excuse me, first meeting in November will be the Highway/Transfer Station, the Water Commission, the Board of Health, and the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee, and I would like to have the Zoning Board of Appeals, if they will join us in that. So, that will be the first meeting in November for those quarterly reports, or semi-annual reports. And I think, just to reiterate, I think one of the things, a couple of people were asking, you know, why do we need to bother to have these kind of reports, given that many of us are liaisons to the committees? But I think, at least from my point of view, I know, we all attend, we all hear what we hear at a given meeting, but I think it's really nice to be able to put the whole picture together and kind of hear the big picture of what the different boards and committees are working on. So, I personally find this useful. It takes time, but I think we're committed to also listening to the issues and concerns of the various committees that are working on their own for us. Jim, yes, last quick question?
Jim Seeny, High Street. I just want some clarification. So, these reports to this board, I agree, I think they're helpful, but how often do you think they're going to happen? Are they annually, quarterly?
Right now, they're not quarterly. They're kind of twice a year, the way it's worked out, by the time we fit everybody in, not more than twice a year.
Right.
Yeah, not more than twice a year. Some may only be once a year, depending on how the schedule goes. But we have a schedule that's been posted on the website, it's on the bulletin board out here as well.
Right.
Yeah, so they cannot be, we've got too many committees to be quarterly, doesn't make sense, but we tried to pick out what kind of group together, okay?
And follow-up question, if I might? Will you be using the same formats, and like, short-term, long-term goals?
I think so. I mean, yeah, and to the extent that that doesn't apply to a particular committee, you can certainly, you know, throw in other information, but I think we wanted to have some basic structure that everybody was writing to, so that they knew what we were expecting to hear, okay?
Well, I just, I'm thinking selfishly, like, the Housing Authority, I don't see our long-term goals changing in six months, for example, so it might be just a quick reiteration, or just a, if that's acceptable to the board here.
Okay. Yep. I don't remember without looking whether you're on there a second time or not, so we'll let you know.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to appointments and resignations. We have a resignation tonight from Jean Murray, from the Library Board of Trustees. I'll read that. It's October 5th. "To Lucy Dalton, the Town Clerk, please accept this letter as my formal notice of resignation from my position as a trustee of the Edwards Public Library, effective immediately. I've thoroughly enjoyed working as a trustee. Thank you for the opportunity. I wish the Edwards Public Library and its Board of Trustees all the best in the future. Sincerely, Jean Murray." So, may I have a motion to...
I move to accept her resignation, Jean Murray's resignation.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to the Town Administrator Report. Ed?
Sure. All right. First up, Lucy Dalton asked me to reiterate a message from the Board of Registers to the Select Board, and it's attached to my report. "The Board of Registers would like to request to put an article on the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on December 14, 2021, regarding the annual town caucus being held on April 5, 2022. The subject was brought up to the Select Board about eliminating the caucus from the election process before the pandemic took over in 2020. At that time, the Select Board's opinion was to let the registered voters have a say in this. We would like to ask the townspeople to vote whether we should continue with this part of the traditional election process or not. The election process for next May's local election starts on February 1, 2022, when nomination papers will be available to be taken out for seats that are open. The Town Clerk will be putting a list out to open seats in December. Would you know, the contractor for Hoyok Gas and Electric, who is doing the directional drilling to move the gas line off the East Street Bridge, started the drilling process yesterday. They are drilling 455 feet in length under the river. If everything goes according to schedule, the drilling portion of this process will be completed this Friday, October 29. They will start the actual tie-in process and move from the old gas line to the new gas line during next week, November 1 through 5. The pickleball courts in Conan Park, Vermont Recreational, has contacted Noon's Construction that due to the weather, availability of paint, and scheduling, that they will not be able to surface the pickleball courts in Conan Park this fall, and they will schedule this work for next spring. The surfacing requires that the temperature be above 55 degrees, and that there is three dry days after the surfacing without any rain. So, unless we have a warming trend in the near future, I don't think this will happen this year, but we never know with the weather. But it does require both of those conditions to be done and done correctly."
Too bad, last week was a great week to have done it.
Yes. And last week would have been the very first week as far as settling or curing for the asphalt that they would have been able to do it, but they did admit that, due to all the rain this year, that they were already behind schedule. See, just to let you know, our request under the Financial Best Practices Grant was denied as all the funding that was available under this program had already been allocated. I will see if there are any other grant programs which come up that may be eligible for this type of use, and I was able to get a link to some of those upcoming programs from Frank Javazio, who oversees the Financial Best Practices Program. "The street and road updates for this construction season are all still continuing. Pleasant Street is currently receiving a paved-level overlay by the vendor. These road updates are being done through the use of our Chapter 90 funding from the state. And just a reminder again, the Assessors' Office will be open on Mondays from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM, Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to noon, and also on Wednesdays from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM, while they are looking to fill a full-time principal assessor vacancy. And the temporary part-time principal assessor, David Zagorski, has started working in the office, along with Janine Denamina being in there Mondays through Wednesdays. And then, upcoming Select Board meeting, the next Select Board meetings will be November 9 and the 23rd."
Good. Any questions, Brad?
Ed, do you know what project the road closure signs in front of Town Hall are for? There's one approaching the firehouse, and there's one by the church that says, "The road ahead is closed."
It's for the bridge.
I believe so, but I don't believe those should be on College Highway. It should say, "Road closed ahead," and then down below, you're talking about East Street.
Yeah, because there's also one on Strong Road.
I think down below, they need to put "East Street."
Too far away from the bridge.
You know, "Road closed ahead, East Street," because driving it, it looks like...
Yeah.
Looks like Route 10 is closed.
I hadn't seen those up until today. I'd seen the ones that they put out for the work actually on East Street, so I will have to first confirm that it is, those are for East Street, but I don't know of any other projects that are going on.
The other day, they were actually laying down, and then today, they were stood up, so I don't know what the deal is, but...
I didn't know if we were digging in front of the firehouse for something, special project.
Not again that I know of.
Not aware of it, so, okay.
Can I ask a question about the caucus? So, is this a request because of the pandemic, or is this a request by the registrars for the future of elections in Southampton?
I believe it's for, by the registrars, for the future of elections in Southampton, not due to the pandemic.
I think there needs to be a distinction, because I think this all came about because of the pandemic, and I just want to make sure that there's, we're clear about it.
I'll also have to see basically what the rules and regulations are for the removal of the caucus.
Because we had to get that approved, I think, by, was the AG's office?
Well, that was under the pandemic piece.
We had special permission to not have a caucus.
To not have it, right.
Right, exactly.
Oh, yeah, so I'd just be curious to know what rules say that we are supposed to.
I'll have to go back and double-check. I believe there's a piece in our bylaws about it.
Okay, I was wondering if it was a bylaw.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what's in the state laws about it, but I will confirm if they are looking to talk about removing the caucus forever from the election process of what actually needs to be done.
Chris, and I would just say, if that was the intent, then I would be opposed to doing that at a special town meeting. I would want that at the full town meeting, to make sure that you have the strongest participation in the vote.
Yeah, I agree.
Not just 51 people that show up.
Yep.
Yeah.
And of course, it's timing, right? Because they would say that normally the caucus would be in April, and the town...
Right.
We just might have to plan more than one year ahead.
But the Select Board can make that decision about the one-year thing, like we've done in the past. I think she, I think at the time, she was responding to, you know, our saying that it really should be the voters that decide this, so I think we're not, we're not far away enough from the pandemic to make a decision that has to do with forever.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, let's move on. Do we have any Select Board reports that are...
Brief.
Yes, go for it.
Capital Committee has not met yet this fiscal year, therefore, nothing to report. Finance canceled their meeting last night, so nothing to report. PPPQ should have met last Thursday, but failed to meet quorum and did not meet. That's my committee reports.
Okay, well, that's the shortest one we've had in a long time. I like that. All right, let's come on down.
Okay, all right. "The Bylaws Committee met on October 13 and further discussed the procedure to incorporate the public comments on the three bylaws now under consideration. As soon as the revisions are completed, they will be forwarded to this board for approval. We are also requesting a response from Town Council regarding the status of Town Council's review of three bylaws recommended for deletion, fees to Town Treasury, solid waste for the transfer station, and commercial identification stickers also for the transfer station. We're in the process of seeking input from Departments and Boards regarding current non-criminal ticketing fees, and in response to a question that came up at a recent Select Board meeting regarding the annual audit review of existing bylaws, does stipulate in the General Government section that the town engage an independent firm to conduct an annual audit. And then, finally, the meeting, the next meeting of the Bylaws Committee will be tomorrow, where we'll be meeting with the Animal Inspector to review the draft of dogs and dog kennels. Also, on October 13, the Norris School Committee met, right here in this room. Just to let everyone know, field trips are being approved on a case-by-case basis. Chunk or Treat, the school version of Halloween, was held on October 22. Extension of in-school masking is in effect until at least November 1, perhaps beyond. If the school and students and staff, in their entirety, demonstrates a vaccination rate of over 80%, then vaccinated individuals will not be required to adhere to the mask requirement. More to come at a later date on that. The school superintendent and the regional committee chair, regional high school committee chair, met with other rural school superintendents, legislators, and the state subcommittee to advocate for increased funding for rural schools, especially for transportation and special ed costs. Let's see. The committee also approved the use of the Norris School gym for SYAA with no spectators, and they will be following the MIAA rules. They also approved the use of the gym or the cafeteria for the special town meeting, which is December, which is scheduled for December 14. They discussed the student code of conduct as well. The committee did not pass the mandatory vaccination testing for staff policy at Norris. Right now, Norris staff has a vaccination rate of about 95%, just so that everyone here knows where the teachers stay. All five towns, the teacher union in all five towns, as part of the Hampshire Regional District, support this policy of mandatory vaccination and testing. Norris so far has a record of having five unvaccinated staff. Some of the districts didn't pass, take a vote on this, because their vaccination rate in their school was 100% among their staff. The committee also approved two safety checknet measures for students who may have been exposed to COVID. I'm not going to go into the details and the nuances of this policy, and I suggest that people view the school committee meeting or obtain a copy of the policy. Both procedures involve the school nurses in administering and documenting the incidents. And then, finally, the Board of Health will meet again on Monday, November 1."
Okay, that's it. Thank you. All right, ready?
CPC, Community Preservation Committee, hasn't met since Virginia presented at the last meeting. Their next meeting is next week on Wednesday, the 3rd. Council on Aging has not met, however, there's some things that are happening. A subgroup is meeting on Thursday of the COA to discuss the donation from the estate of David Parsons, where we have a time limit to design/plan for a new senior center, and so that's hap-
And so that's happening this Thursday. Also, I had mentioned that Darlene Motica, who was an administrative assistant, has retired. So we met today, Ed, myself, SUE Director Janet Kane, and Joan Lenihan met today to discuss the needs of the senior center and it's more shifting from administrative assistance, which Darlene did much more than that anyway, to more of a program coordinator position. So we're going to be tabling that discussion today and asking that that be put on the agenda for two weeks from tonight because we're not quite ready. So Ed and Joan will follow up from our discussion today and finalize a job description of COA Program Coordinator. Their next meeting is also next Wednesday, 11:03. The Board of Assessors met last Tuesday, taking care of routine business, discussed the recruitment of a principal assessor and the coverage of the Assessors' Office. Ed mentioned the hours that they're open. There's also an interim assessor in place. Plus, we're going to see a PCF for another 12 weeks of Janine being able to increase her hours to help in covering the office. They've also been addressing veteran abatement, tax abatements. And their next meeting is next Monday, the 2nd of November. And then Monday, yesterday, we had a Public Safety Complex meeting at 4 o'clock. And there was, I think, a really good discussion of basically the role of this committee, the history of this committee. And I think there was some mutual consensus that there hasn't been enough public support generated for the ideas and the programs, or at least the initiatives, for example, the town meeting project and the fact that it was $11 million. And then the previous, the more recent project, there wasn't also public support for that the importance of this committee and the composition of the committee is very important that I think that I'm also going to ask that the Select Board include on the agenda a discussion of the Public Safety Committee because it is a committee that reports to us. And I, you know, it's kind of, we're the ones that present the charge with maybe suggestions from the committee. But I was thinking it would be important to have a Council on Aging representative, also possibly master plan. It's very heavily firefighters, retired firefighters, and police. And I think it's a little bit of preaching to the choir if we want really good public support. We also talked about the importance of open communication on this committee, that that goes a long way for public support and trust. There were two initiatives that were asked of us as a board and I'm going to mention both of them because I think they both require votes. Hang on, and I'll bring that up. The first was a request, nope, wrong file, excuse me. Well, basically, the first was a request that Select Board reach out to our state rep and state senator to request that there be consideration of either ARPA funds or additional funds to be available for Public Safety Complex. So we talked about the change probably in our state representation, but for now, I'm happy to do that if the board wants to authorize me to do that. Similarly, remember, the CPA funds weren't available in the past for Greenway and now they're available. So the hope is even though ARPA funds, if you read through the current directive, it doesn't really qualify in my mind, somebody else might disagree, but to just let both legislators know that, you know, because police and fire are at the front lines of this pandemic and the storage of a lot of PPE and a lot of things that it kind of, I think it's important that they realize that, you know, these departments need to be housed in safe places and it makes sense then to try to extend what's available for these funds in terms of infrastructure to also be available for.
And I think what they were talking about, because we mentioned, I believe, that the allocation has been given to the town for the ARPA funds already in terms of what the amount is supposed to be, but I think they were referring to the other surplus funds that are noted at the state level, that there are other pots of money out there that would be appropriate to try and ask for. So that may be an idea of doing a letter with that in mind.
And the legislature is right now in the middle of taking the huge surplus that they have for a couple of different pots and reallocating them into, I think, seven different categories. And again, Public Safety Complex isn't one of them. It's all the things that we already know that they're looking at from food insecurity to infrastructure to all of that. But I still think it's worth reaching out to our legislators and saying that we're requesting that they push to be able to have Public Safety Complexes as part of funding possibility to the state. So if people are willing to.
Would you like to have.
authorize me to do that, I'm happy to.
Ed, question?
Perfect timing because, and I forgot to mention it in my town administrator's report, because Senator Vellis's office reached out to us today asking if there was anything coming up that might be included in the Senate side of the ARPA funds discussion. So I will get back to them and make that one of the pieces because I know it isn't currently in any of the categories that exist for the state funding categories for ARPA.
They literally came out with this yesterday afternoon and the House of Representatives is asking for feedback by 3 o'clock today.
Oh, really?
And I wasn't about to do it because I didn't, I felt like it had to come to this board first. The Senate is going to be voting on this in two weeks' time. So why the turnaround for the House of Representatives was so short? So just to be clear, if that's something that you are able and interested to do, that's fine. I just want to make sure that whatever motion that we have, that there be follow-up.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that you work with Ed on that to get that, to get that done and in soon so that we can at least put our case before the legislature and see what they say. And I don't know, would we write to the new rep now rather than Lindsay? We'd be writing to Kelly Gies?
I don't think it's going, our rep is still Lindsay.
Doesn't take effect, right?
That hasn't taken effect.
Doesn't take effect in January. So we'd still write to Lindsay in that regard.
So I think my preference would be that we, Ed or I or both of us are split it up, contact by phone and follow it up with an email.
Okay.
So you made a motion?
All right, so I think I made a motion.
Seconded it, yeah.
Does that work? Okay. All in favor of having Rini and Ed take the charge on writing to our legislature about trying to plead for, plead for extra funds for our Public Safety Complex? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone? All right.
And there was one other request that they had asked me to bring. And so there was consensus at the meeting that the best-case scenario, I think that's what they said, and Cindy and Chris were both there, so you can tell me if you heard this the same way, that there was generally the feeling that the best place for this Public Safety Complex is behind the existing fire department. But yet, they want to have a dual sort of track as they have in the past where they continue the possibility of reaching out for land in town, see if there are landowners that are interested in donating their land or selling their land. And so they have asked the Select Board to consider, the Select Board to send out letters to landowners, the same landowners or the same parcels that they did about two years ago to see whether there's any change in people's willingness to donate or sell the land to the town. I would like to ask the Select Board to consider not doing that right now. What I'd like to do, since I'm the representative to the, or liaison to the assessors, is to actually, for the next Public Safety Committee, which is only two weeks away, November 8th, is to actually get a list of all of the current landowners that are at those parcels to write down who the landowner is, what the size of the parcel is, any other details, how far they are from the town's current fire department, because if it's more than 0.5 miles, then it negatively impacts people's insurance. But, you know, there's a lot of boxes that have to be checked that we, that you allow me to, instead of sending out the letters, which I think is premature, is to go ahead and get information on who is the new landowner, if it's changed, what is the size of the parcel, what is their address, how far are they from the center of town? And then bring that information back to the Public Safety Committee in two weeks' time because I'm going to tell you what happened last time we did this. Not only did it create a big problem with one particular land that caused a lot of ethic concerns and so forth, but there was another person that wrote back and said, I am interested. But then nobody reached back out to them. I think the decision was made that the parcel is actually at a bad turn. It's the one that's right across from Fulmer Road. And I think the decision was made that it was not a good place. So we're not going to send a letter back out to this person after they were upset about us not. So that's what I would like to authorize, ask the board if, as opposed to doing what might have been recommended and thinking about it since yesterday's meeting, I would rather gather the information and then bring it back to them and say, here are the parcels, this is the new owner, do we really, are they still on the list? I have mixed feelings frankly personally about sending letters out. I think that if we really want to get people behind this project, we decide on what the best place for this and we move forward in that direction. But the committee voted to do that, so.
Yeah, that was a request for the Select Board. And I think one of the comments I know that I had made at the time is that because the current committee is a little bit mixed in terms of who's on there, we don't have the same agreement in terms of what's on our website versus who is supposedly on the committee. And then I think Ed made the comment last time when we did reappoint, or appoint rather, Charlie Kinnicki to the committee, that we were going to go for terms this time rather leaving it open to completion, which is what everybody else's name and membership is. So personally, I would like to see the committee restructured, I mean, renominated, restructured, re, what, get new members. I mean, they need some new membership as well, as you were saying, from other sources, and then take these different steps. I don't see the urgency to send out letters to landowners now when the committee isn't really yet a full committee.
We know what the charge is, but kind of rewriting perhaps the guidelines to that group. So that there are some parameters, not that we're going to intervene, but so that going forward, you know, they. And I know we went as far as having a design and my understanding was a budget was never presented to the designers and it got, it got to be very expensive, well beyond the means of the town. So those are the kinds of parameters I'm thinking that perhaps should be put forward.
You want to avoid.
Well, just to give you an example, West Hampton just approved a Public Safety Complex. I personally think that there are a lot of things that are missing from that particular complex, but I think the price tag came in at 4.3 million. Williamsburg has also used existing land, existing building. They're actually doing a demolition of the James School and that's where they're putting that. And I think that came in at maybe five, six million. Our project five years ago was 11 million. So I just think that we, I think that we need to put a project in front of the town that, we need, A, to make sure that we have public support for whatever project that's well communicated and there's good open communication, but we also need to make sure that it's doable. And there's a lot of competing other projects right now between the Greenway, which is number one in this town in terms of master plan feedback, number two, the whole senior center thing with the donation pending and two years to come up with a plan for that, and the Public Safety. I mean, so there's just a lot of questions. So my preference would be that at the next Select Board meeting, it's the Select Board that decided what the charge was in 2016 to this committee because they reported up the Select Board. So I would like to request that on the agenda that we.
Take a look at the charge?
That the Select Board get a copy of the 2016 charge. And that at the next meeting, that I will, you know, bring the feedback on the properties to the Public Safety Committee on the 8th and then maybe on the 9th. I'll ask for their feedback on the charge in terms of their, they thought it was a good idea to include a diverse number of people. We had kind of suggested, or I kind of suggested, that maybe they not restructure the committee in terms of chair and all that until there's a decision on who's actually on the committee, but they didn't want to do that. So they did appoint Charlie Kinnicki Chair, Don Warren Vice Chair, and Janet Brown Clerk.
Temporary.
Temporarily, although it wasn't, the motion wasn't for a set amount of time, like 12 weeks. It was, you know, but they did indicate that once the board is reconstituted or whatever, and then all the people have to be reappointed if that's the plan. And your suggestion to have them have a term was well received.
I think so, yeah. And I think the other part of the discussion for anybody, just curious, is that given that we already own the land where the current fire station is up and behind it, it's already got the septic, I mean, the big cost, or one of the big costs on the earlier plan was the acquisition of land itself. And so to jump and still be looking for other lands when we actually do have something, it needs rethinking, no doubt about it. But, you know, that was a huge cost, I think, last time that, you know, I don't know, it just feels better to look at and see how we can better use the land that we already own rather than trying to spend more money on new land.
Two points that came out of the meeting, which I think were really interesting, is Janet Brown had said that she thought that the architects, they had proposed four different scenarios for the design. She thought that after things were turned down, that there was another plan that was proposed that was less money. Nobody was aware of it, so she is going to check into that. And the other thing is, part of the reason why the price tag was so high for the previous Public Safety Complex was because of the amount of ledge in the back there and that at least a million of the money was to actually deal with the ledge. Charlie's point was really interesting one where, you know, you have to put so much fill in because of the weight of the trucks that it was kind of an interesting thing that you would remove it all and then have to put in structural, you know, like things to handle the weight of the things as opposed to using the ledge as a vehicle for managing the weight of the rigs. So anyway, I think that that's where things stand is reconstituting the committee, you know, trying to get money from the state or federal government. But if people are willing to, I'd rather we do everything by motions. So if you wouldn't mind creating a motion authorizing me to look into the parcels and to report back to the Public Safety Committee so that they can determine who would still, who they still want to get a letter, and then we'll revisit it on the 9th. Does that sound okay to everybody?
John had a question first, I think.
Well, I mean, it's like we went from forming a committee to bam, we're trying to solicit land. I mean, I guess it's one thing to ask the state for money, but this project since '16 has continued to decline on the priority list of the citizens. That I think if we want it to be successful, and I'm not even sure the citizens of the town as a whole, that this is one of the top priorities, that they want that a lot more education, public outreach, and open dialogue needs to happen, to your point about sending out the letters. I think the committee needs to get clear in their mind what they want to do first and then get like a public listening sessions before they start trying to solicit this land. Because if I was a landowner, well, I am a landowner, but if I was going to consider donation of land, I'd want to know the details involved with that versus just getting some random letter. So I think, I mean, and I mean this with respect, I think they need to pump the brakes, come up with a campaign to accomplish this and then start moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just my feedback.
Yeah, okay, good point. Thank you. Okay, Ed. All right, yeah.
One question, since you were both there. Did the committee want to change their name from Public Safety Building Committee to Public Safety Complex Committee?
That didn't come up, Ed.
Okay.
What's the current title?
I believe it's Public Safety Building Committee. But I received an email this morning from Janet asking if that could be changed to Public Safety Complex Committee. And I didn't want to.
Janet Brown?
Yes.
That didn't even come up at the meeting.
Interesting.
You got to pump the brakes.
Yeah.
We can just wait until the next time.
The other point I was just making about the communication needs to happen in the committee, that there's a lot of history of people going outside the meetings and stuff. So I'm trying to really make sure that anything that the Select Board wants me to do as a representative is based on your support and vote. So I would be willing, I mean, if you want me to say, you want me to just put the brakes on it myself and say, no, we're not ready to go out and do letters, then that's fine. Otherwise, if you want me to do something, I'd prefer it be a motion.
But I think John is right. I mean, unless we build a groundswell of enthusiasm for this project and that only comes with people understanding what it's about, you could get all the way to the end and people are still going to vote no. So I think doing it in a different way than it was done in the past, rather than present the product after the fact, involve people, you know, at the very beginning.
Or stages of it too, perhaps, yeah.
And to be honest, I don't support the dual track because, as you just said, there is ledge back there, but maybe we could redesign the complex to utilize that. So then that needs to be a focus of the committee. They can't, you know, be spreading themselves thin. They really should be focusing on a design that fits with that particular parcel. So it's really kind of, yeah, pump the brakes, really decide what you want to do and get some community input.
Okay, okay. That sounds reasonable. Ed, coming?
Yes, I'm just going to say this from some of the, shall we say, larger projects I've been involved with or seen in the past is one piece, and I think it's an important piece of selling this to the residents and the public of Southampton. Both current buildings, complexes, whatever you want to call them, fire and police are sadly lacking in safety and OSHA requirements. So there's a cost to bring those two up to. So there's a cost to bring those two up, to make them, shall we say, currently compliant. I believe that that cost is important to identify and is a big portion of why the town may want to spend seven, eight, nine million dollars on a public safety complex because it's very possible that the alternative is we're going to spend six or seven million dollars bringing those buildings up to the compliant levels.
Well, I don't think anyone's talking about keeping the fire department as it is. I mean, the only discussion had to do with whether or not the facade is kept because the historical commission feels strongly and the townspeople have been very, you know, like focused on history. I don't think anybody was thinking that that building's going to be brought up to code. I think if anything, the facade would be kept and then built around it. I think that's what the discussion was last night. And one of the reasons why the 4.3 is, you know, pretty low for West Hampton, I mean, it's well documented that carcinogens are on clothing that firefighters use. And if you're bringing them home with you or you're putting them in the fire station and they're not separate and you're not showered and you're not cleansed, it's a huge risk for firefighters. And I don't even, if you look at the things that are not included in the West Hampton project, it's concerning because a lot of them are those OSHA things. So I'm not saying we're going to get by with a four to five million dollar thing, but.
Yeah, no, but I agree. But that's part of the argument. It's like either we invest in a new building or we're going to have to bring these up to code at some point. The cost of that is estimated to be X and put some meat behind it to be realistic. But then the next step is, what are we going to do with these buildings? And so if we're going to save the facade, because the firehouse over here didn't used to be a schoolhouse and then they added on an extension. So it's really not necessarily original, original, right? It's been remodeled a couple of times. The police station's the old town hall. Okay, we can't even afford to keep those up now. So we want to add another building and possibly keep one and a half or add the facade to the new one, but we still got to keep the town hall. You know, we've already acquired the land because we know the septic system's failing over there, then we got to put the septic in. You know.
The other thing, both these other towns, Williamsburg and West Hampton, they demolished the buildings and the big price is the land. Like the whole reason why this public safety complex committee or building committee, whatever it is, reconvened was because we heard there was land over by Mormon Keystone at the town, at the price of 1.7 million. We also heard that there was land behind East Street that bordered Conan Park. And so we were, that's why we became more interested in going back to the table a little bit because both of these properties were in a half mile radius of the town. So anyway, the bottom line is you can save a lot of money by building something on existing land. And there's much more interest by the two historical people at the meeting yesterday to not hold on so dearly to the buildings as they currently exist.
Right. And the last thing I would say is, we're going to build this building for what? And that's not really a question, that's a statement. Because right now we have paid-on-call fire and we have ambulance 24/7. Are we going to, is that what we're going to keep it all? Are we going to keep three officers on the day shift and two? Is that where we're going with our town as we continue to grow seven to nine percent every decade? You know, so what services do we want? And then let's figure out what we can do. And I just keep saying, we can't afford the services we have right now.
Correct.
So adding debt service without a big picture, I guess to answer your question, Maureen, I would be opposed to approving a letter.
Okay.
Which is what started.
But you do, you're fine with not reaching out, okay.
I think we can hold off on the letters. If you want to do the investigation on who the, who those parcels now belong to, I mean, but not send a letter out if you wanted to go that route.
I'd like, you know, I think we can just, I'll take the word that we're going to hold off right now because there's not necessarily support for dual track at this particular point. We have to really reconvene on the ninth and say, this is the charge of this committee because they do fall under the select board.
Correct. Okay. All right. Anything else from your committee?
No, the next meeting of the Public Safety Building Committee
Yes.
is November 8th.
All right. Okay, thanks. Okay, Joy, can you give us a synopsis?
Yeah, I will try. Lovely, Planning Board and Housing Authority presented tonight, so I will just give an update to their next meetings. Planning Board is meeting November 3rd at 7:00 PM here in this room. And Housing Authority is meeting October 28th at 6:00 PM remotely. And also the community meeting is regarding the goals of the housing production plan is on November 18th at 6:30 via Zoom. Open Space Committee met last week. I apologize, my days are on the 21st. And attempts are underway to create organized approach to trail stewardship. The Friends of Open Space Committee is really up and going. They're forming and more volunteers are needed though. And so for inquiries, for volunteering for the trails on Open Space, you can send an email to openspace@townofsouthampton.org. The Cusco Land Trust expressed interest in learning more about Southampton, the town goals and open spaces. Their staff, including their executive director, recently went on a driving tour and a hike with the Open Space Chairperson, Cindy Palmer. They were impressed with the beauty of the forest and our open spaces. We have some gorgeous land here in town. They want to assist us with applying for large grant funding, which I've mentioned before. And so we welcome town residents to attend our meetings, offer ideas, ask questions and help. And the next meeting is at 10 o'clock, 6:00 PM, or sorry, November 10th at 6:00 PM via Zoom. And I hope I didn't miss anything, Cindy. Awesome. Conservation Commission was the last meeting. They, I don't know if you were aware, but there was a solar enforcement case that the town was dealing with. And there was an environmental project memorandum and a memorandum of understanding. I think the amount, the settlement amount was around 70,000. So that amount, that project amount will be used for any projects in regards to the Manhan River watershed here in town. So that is going to be in process. In regards to Manhan Meadows Sanctuary, the Conservation Commission is waiting for updated specs from the bidder so we can sign the contract for the trail restoration work. And so the NOI can be completed for the middle to DEP and National Heritage. We are also waiting for them to send us an updated list of materials and costs since prices of building materials went up this year, unfortunately. We need to seek additional funding but need specifics. The Chair and Town Administrator are in the process of signing the contracts with the state for the grant for the replacement bridge. Sanctuary is closed. I would like to remind the public of that. However, we do need volunteers to cut back the thorny vegetation near the existing trail since it's hard to get there, even to look at it for the discussions of the work. And the Treasurer also would like to reiterate, he would like to meet with someone in regards to doing reconciling the 2021 books. And so I just have a request for an update for what we're going to do with that. I'm sure that's on the agenda down further. And Conservation would also like to remind everyone, if they're out hiking on the trails, to wear orange or whatever bright colors they can because it is hunting season. And also still a call for volunteers. Their next meeting is November 1st at 6:00 PM via Zoom.
Is that why you have the nice scarf on?
I was gonna say, good Halloween colors, the black and orange.
I just want to mention, the Council on Aging is doing a tremendous amount of things. And I just wanted to mention a couple of things so anybody that's listening could take advantage of this. That the Friends of the Council on Aging are packing 40 grocery bags, care bags to give away mid-November. There's also a SAN for seniors program. So if people are interested, there's also a Good eats to Go gift card, turkey dinner. If people are interested in the number to call for any of those are 529-2105. They're also saluting veterans on Wednesday, November 10th with a brunch at 11 o'clock. So please take advantage if you would like.
Okay, thanks. Just following up one thing on the Concom. I mentioned this to Ed. I think at some point in time, we've got to just, you know, get on top of the contractor, I believe it's Kane and Company or whatever their full name is out of Southwick or Westfield to be more responsive. I mean, this bidding process is, I mean, they won the bid, but they have not been overly forthcoming. I know they've talked to Emily and that you all have agreed on certain things at Concom level about what changes may be needed, but they are not coming forth with the paperwork that's needed to make the necessary changes so that the contract can get signed. So at this point in time, I mean, I'm I'm feeling like many of our grants are just at risk because we are not able to conclude certain things here. And I really would like to request that Ed, if you just put him on your phone call list and keep on dialing until you get this guy to come and do something.
I would not know what to do at this time. The Concom took it and gave it to the contractor
Right.
and Emily to work out.
And they've apparently were waiting for him to give them paperwork and he just is not doing it.
I will check with, I will check with Marla because I don't know that for a fact.
Okay. That's my understanding anyway, that he has not been responsive to give them the paperwork. He's understood what needs to be done and they've discussed it, but the actual papers that they need to move forward with either signing the contract or with the NOI just seem to be lacking. And so just because it is a grant with the state and it is through, yes, it's Concom, but, you know, I think as the town administrator, we need to put some weight behind it and just say, look, we need to have this done. This has been, what, August it was awarded, at least? I mean, we're two months away.
I believe it was before that.
Probably even more. So anyway, I'd appreciate if you would put that on your to-do list, among other things, of course. From my point of view, just the tech, ad hoc tech committee, they haven't met since we put in the grant application for the Community Compact IT. They will be meeting on November 8th by Zoom at 6:00 PM. And Ed, I don't know, you didn't mention it in your report, but do you want to mention anything about the laptops while we're on that briefly? Just that we've got them?
They're just, they're just about done. The one for the Health Director, the Health Director and the Board of Health are holding off on right now. So they're supposed to talk about that at their November 1st meeting. I'll see if they don't want it, if there's someone that we can reprogram that too. But other than that, the last time the vendor was out here, the, other than the Board of Health one, he went to deploy and install the one for the library and there was no internet at the library. So he could not finish that. So he has to come back and finish, finish that one when they have internet. And then it would just be that last laptop of whether it's going to the Health Department or somewhere else to do. But other than that, they are all deployed at this point in time and up and working.
Good. That's great to hear.
And, you know, when we get into the CARES additional funding request, you'll see that part of that is a request to reprogram some of the funds to cover the additional laptops that we did get over our additional estimate and the extra cost of installing them.
Okay. Good, thanks. So
You're welcome.
With that in mind, let's move on to old business. Audit update. Where are we with our other questions?
And we're working on the questions that the auditor has for the accounting side of things. And actually now that Bradley and Ellen are getting their feet wet on the regular, shall we say, processes, I've actually been working with them, utilizing them to do some research and garnering me some information on both reports that have to be filed for DOR, mainly the CP2, and also some of the information that the auditors have asked for. So we're spreading out. Hopefully, I won't get back to it this week with the deadlines we have, but hopefully we'll be able to put 99 and 9/10% of it together next week and get it back to the auditors.
Okay, well, obviously, we all agree that it's a high priority and it's something that's got to got to get done to keep us moving forward here. So if there's any way that others can be of help to you, just let us know. What is the deadline to this, Ed? This seems important, like, have they, I mean, we've already heard obviously about, you know, this whole process, like, do you, are you, is there any fine or penalty for getting information late to them? Or what is the?
We're better off getting it to them as quickly as possible, only so that they can actually finish off closing off our books and we get the information back to the rating agencies.
What's the primary holdup then? Is it other competing projects? Is it getting the information? Because I think we said Bradley was going to be focusing on 2022.
It's putting together the information and then some of it is interpretive also, but both pieces of that.
So maybe by the next time we meet the ninth, we think it'll be done?
Hopefully, yeah, we'll have all the answers by then.
Okay. All right. We're gonna keep on, keep on pushing that because that is definitely a high priority. And to the extent, I mean, you're right. I mean, Bradley and Ellen, we were having them work on the FY22 revenue and income, yeah, revenue and expenditure statements rather than the FY21 ones. But to the extent they can get familiar with some of the issues related to the audit, I think, you know, more hands on deck to get this done and over to the auditors so that they can complete their work, I think that's important. All right. Annual audit contract with that in mind. We've had some discussion about that. Where do things stand? I know we had talked about the fact that we have a contract ending and we could possibly renew this or we might not do that. John, I don't know if you've had any latest thoughts on that in terms of?
No, I mean, I think, I think the, I think there's two avenues for us to go down. One is we either we either don't have the audit, which requires a vote of special town meeting, or we do have the audit, which means we don't have an auditor in place, right? If we wanted to do that. Because I don't believe we can automatically, I don't envision that we can automatically continue our three-year contract for one more year. I think we have to do the whole RFQ or RFP process.
You don't have to. Auditing is outside 30B, number one.
Yep.
It's not necessarily if we can or can't do that. It's, I think this one hinges on the fact of getting the information out to the three vendors that we've already mentioned about with the scope of work for our fiscal '21 books.
If we don't do the audit.
We need that anyway.
Well.
We need to, we need to have the vendors, somebody come in and close out the books for '21 anyway.
Right, exactly. So right. And then depending on who we actually use for that, if it was Melanson, then no, they could not audit our fiscal year. If we did an audit, they could not ask, do our fiscal year '21 books. If it was someone else, then Melanson still could do our fiscal year '21 books. And we could just do, you know, a one-year piece on that.
So, right, so and perhaps I phrased the question the wrong way. The existing three-year commitment that we had from Melanson Heath does not contain what I would call an evergreen clause that allows it to roll for a fourth year automatically. I don't think it does.
It doesn't. You could do it one year just on its own.
Right, but we haven't done that. So
No.
So right now, there is nobody set up to do our audit of the '21 numbers.
Correct.
We need, we, we are looking to spend money to bring in an outside resource to help us close the '21 numbers, but we have yet to identify those funds. We do have to put the scope together to get that out. And then we have to determine whether or not we're actually going to hold an audit on the '21 numbers.
Correct.
So that's kind of the update. We don't have conclusion anywhere.
Isn't Melanson doing FY21?
No.
They're doing 20.
FY20?
20. Was the last, last year of that agreement.
Yeah, 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 right. Right, FY20. So, right, so I mean, right now, we had said that if we were not going to do an audit, we have around 21,000, I believe, available in that audit line in the budget that could possibly be used toward this consultant for the cleanup of the '21 books. But I think we don't know anything, we can't make, in my mind, we can't make that decision yet until we know what each of these three consultants would propose to us for a cost for the job. And then we say, okay, well, this is really ridiculous. We can't possibly do that and an audit or the cost is not as bad as we thought it was. You know, we can, we can afford to still have somebody come in and do this closeout using maybe some of the funds from the audit, but maybe not all of it. You know, I think we can't make those decisions until we have the scope of work out and their response to
For the 20, for the work in '21.
For the '21 closeout, what it's going to cost. You know, and verifying everything from the, you know, the transfers, the revenue numbers, the, you know, the grant money received, the whatever. And all the, you know, the things that people have been asking about. So I think we've got to really just make that, you know, I thought we had moved forward on the scope of work, but I gather we don't have that yet.
I think the finding the sequence is important.
Yeah. So I think, do we, do we have, or can we have a draft scope of work within a short timeframe or is that very complicated? I know you guys were going to work on it, but I don't know what your schedules have been. So between you and Ed, John, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm leaving Thursday afternoon for work. I'll be back late Saturday night, so it would have to be early next week. Or I could do early next week.
So, I mean, I think the idea, right, would be to get a draft scope of work. We kind of delegated it to the two of you. And then that would go out to all three entities that have been identified as potential auditor, well, closeout people. I guess I'll call them right now. Closeout people to help us clean up the books and close them out for '21, right? So can we aim to do that and get it out to them and hear maybe back for them, from them by our next meeting?
Absolutely.
All right, let's put that out as a goal, all right?
Yes, we'll definitely have it out.
If we can, well, and you know, I mean.
What is the deadline with the state for getting that information to them?
To get our free cash certified and everything?
Well, you can, you can certify free cash at any time. You're only basically forced to get it done earlier rather than later when you're looking to spend it. You know, so at this point in time, we can, like we did this past year, we can still allocate that into its different categories or buckets at the annual town meeting rather than at a, at a special town meeting.
I think, I think the issue is going, the issue is going to be, we're not going to be able to set the tax rate.
Right, that's, that's the one that I'm, I'm more worried about.
Christmas Eve, okay.
Nice present.
It's, it's, well.
So.
In order to certify the tax rate, all the reports have to be into the DOR in the schedule list and all those need to be done.
What's the deadline to get all the reports into the DOR? I mean, if we can back it up, backtrack?
Well, some communities have already done it, but I mean, between, usually by the end of October, October, November is really the time when.
Yeah.
Yes.
All those things go in.
Right.
So if we get that information, I mean, if, I don't know, we have a month. So if you're going to be away, I mean, is it realistic to be able to have, get out to, you know, like, I'm sure all the communities are in the same boat and are these three companies going to be even available? Is it realistic to put the scope of work together, get out a quote, hire somebody to do it and have them close the books?
The, the, my opinion only is that I think we should just accept the fact that we're not going to set the tax rate and we should do, we should, we should ask the collector to prepare for a preliminary third bill, which has to get requested. And I believe it has to be 30 days in advance. There's a whole process.
Yeah, okay.
That the collector's going to have to do once it's, otherwise, by not doing that, only thing that happens is third tax bills aren't collected and then the fourth tax bill, everybody gets doubled up. But it means that we're borrowing, well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Running out of cash.
Not a great idea.
Well, let's at least plan by the next meeting to have the scope of work and possibly even get it out.
Scope of work, no, no, scope of work out.
And the response.
To the three and.
Get the response back so that we can approve a company by next, next time.
We're already November 9th, November 9th at the next meeting. So if we can really try to do that, that would be.
So we'll try to get them out by Tuesday at noon, asking for a one-week turnaround.
Yeah.
Yep, 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 and then hire somebody next, by next Tuesday and ask them how long it'll take and.
Yeah, because I think we're stuck in terms of knowing whether to say yea or nay on an audit, let alone in, you know, doing a change.
What do you think is the DOR deadline?
I don't know.
To get all the reports to the DOR? If Christmas Eve is the cutoff?
Well, that's, well, that's actually, you have to have the bills out before that, so.
It does take 14 days to print them.
Right.
The lead time.
Exactly, so I'd, I'd say the end of November.
End of November, oh, well, that's tough.
We've got a short turnaround time to do whatever we think to do. So I mean, I think we've got to.
Yep.
Hopefully engage somebody and.
Yeah, get them going.
Get them going, because we are way behind scheduling.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's the, that's the idea. It's more than the idea, it's more than the goal, it is the plan, okay? Scope of work out and a response from the, at least one of them, if not all three of them, hopefully. So we can choose what's going on. I mean, we need to get an idea of what the cost is. We really have no idea what the, what the cost might be to help us close this out.
And I think we'd have to worry, we have to worry less right now about a contract for a future year with the, with any one of them and just find out which one can close our books in the most expeditious and costly way.
Right, and so once we know that, then we can figure out whether we can extend with Melanson or.
Right.
Right.
All right, moving forward. Route 10 Bridge water main update, I assume some of the same stuff happening there? Nothing, nothing new really on that?
Well, they, the contractor has been back out and done degrading and seeding and repaired the curbing and the asphalt cuts where they needed to from the punch list. So unless they have some further testing to do, I believe that they're basically done out there.
I think there's still signs up though.
Are there? I don't know, I haven't been down there.
At least it was last time. This time I've been going down the East Street way. Find out what's happening on that one. But there were the most, I'll look again.
Okay, I didn't notice any, the other day when I went to there. Far as, far as I'm aware, it looks like all the physical stuff has been done. I'll see if they have any, have to return to do any further testing on the system itself or not.
Did they do any final thing with the water department or anybody?
Yes, they did, they do.
Closing meeting or something?
Well, I was, I was out there for the punch list.
Okay.
So, you know, it's just a question, if the punch list is done, they won't meet again. If there's still stuff on the punch list, they might meet again.
Okay, and East Street Bridge, you've kind of talked about that already? Anything else?
Uh, not really. Once the, once they're finished with doing the tie-in from the old gas main to the new gas main, then it'll be ready for the contractor to come in and actually start the demolition work. We will have a pre-construction meeting before they actually do, do the actual start of the demolition.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Okay, moving on to new business. First on agenda item is a disclosure by the non-elected municipal employee of financial interest. This is Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. And what we have in the packet here, let me understand here.
Yes.
This is related to.
The Fitch Farm Way there. I make a motion to approve this disclosure.
Okay.
He has potential.
What's the, the address? I don't seem to have it right handy.
It's number three Fitch Farm Way.
Okay.
So basically, as he, his wife, as an attorney, is involved and may be involved with a number of things relative to the construction of this building, driveway, curb cut, whatever. So he's putting out a non-disclosure of a financial interest. Disclosure by non-elected municipal employee of financial interest and determination by appointing authority.
Okay, so you made a motion? Can we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question, sorry. My question is, so is this for Mr. Garska's actual residential home? Or is this a project that he's, because he's in construction?
He's building, he's building a house.
Multiple homes?
Yeah, he's a builder.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's a builder, okay. So I don't know, this is the first time I've seen this?
Yeah, so this is not, this is not uncommon for Randall because his wife's an attorney and she represents.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay, yeah, that every time, because I saw that he was in construction. So every time something like this happens, he files one.
Every time there's a potential financial interest being his wife and was a.
Okay, excellent, thank you for clarifying. Ayes? Aye.
We're all in favor of that, so thank you for the disclosure there. Precinct designations for Southampton. I'll turn that over to Ed, I guess.
I'm so sorry, were you waiting for the poll thing?
I, I didn't realize it was.
Oh, it was a hearing that was scheduled for six.
This was very interesting.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, see you later. Oh, thank you, thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
I kind of thought I started to say that to him.
So sorry.
I mean, it was, yeah, it was, it was six o'clock, so he must have gotten the note, noticed it was six. Oh, well.
I, I.
Good going, John.
Thanks, John. I had no clue.
I was going to wait till the, any other business.
I thought he was just interested in the meeting and see what happens.
Well, he was, but I don't think to that extent.
It's pretty.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure his two kids are asleep right now.
Yeah, we're dedicated.
Maybe that's it.
It's always nice to have an enthusiastic audience.
Okay, so, yeah, precinct designations, do we have some thoughts and information about that or is that?
No, Lucy has not heard back from the state on what, the information that she had sent out to them after meeting with Randall, Paul Demon, and myself. We had, the, the way they had drawn up, we're going to have to go to a second precinct because of our population from, from the census. And I think it's, I forget if it's, I think, believe it's over 6,000 we need to. I think we're at 6122 according to the census. So the state had actually sent a suggested map back to the town and Lucy wanted to get, like I say, Falls is the planning board chair's opinion. You know, Randall Kemp is the highway superintendent and mine is town administrator. And we had looked at it and I'm going to mess this up, I know it, but probably about 80 to 85% of the map that they had come back with made some sense. However, when they got to the southern portion of College Highway, the split went right down College Highway. Instead of following like a road from that point in time, they actually followed the railroad tracks to make the split between what would be precinct one and precinct two. And actually, you know, I had made the comment, but, you know, Randall and Paul Demon had the same comment as to why would it follow the railroad tracks rather than a road? So we sent two alternatives back to them. One is just follow College Highway. But you also, also have to have a very narrow, shall we say, band of people in those two precincts. So I don't think it was a variation of over 200 that you had to fall between. So we don't know if, if you go down College Highway, if that's going to throw those two parameters off or not. But my suggestion, and I know I'm going to mess up which street it is, wish I had the map in front of me.
What's it off of?
Oh, it's off of College Highway and I want to say it starts.
Probably former road where the right road.
Near where?
Comes across.
No, no, it actually kind of runs parallel with College Highway.
Pleasant Street.
Parallel.
Thank you. I knew, I was going to say Brook something, but yeah, it's, it's Brickyard. So my suggestion was to basically follow Brickyard the rest of the way down and have the people on one side of it being one precinct and on the other side and, and the other. So we sent them back those two options. Lucy sent it off to them. She sent another email off to them today because we hadn't heard back and it's supposed to be finalized by October 30, 31st or I think it is. So, you know, theoretically, they, they would take those two options, run it, and by their records of the registered voters, would, would take a look at it and say, well, yes, if you do option one, you're going to have too many people in this precinct and not enough in that, you're going to be outside the band or they'll say it's okay. And the same thing for the, for the other option, so.
So the reason, just to be clear, so the reason to have two precincts is based on population?
It's based on population, correct.
But the division of, the, the composition of the precincts is based on registered voters? I mean, 6,000 is.
I would think.
I'd have to go back, no, it would be, it would again be on the, it would be, again, beyond the population, I would think.
Oh, okay, okay, I was just wondering.
Is this, is this ultimately going to lead to precinct representation? Like instead of five at-large members or a select board, two from precinct two, two from one and then one at large?
I can only tell you what.
I'd like to know which precinct I fall in.
I can only.
I'm in Southern College Highway.
I, I can only tell you what I've been told historically, I don't know if it's accurate or not, because for this size community, I think the right size of a select board is three members and not five. But that's my own personal opinion.
With these number of committees.
But what I was told was that at one time, when they did go from three to five, is they felt that by going to five members, they get, might, or they would get select board members that represented other areas of the community, like the Pons area or what have you. That really hasn't happened. The only way that really happens is, yes, if you have precinct, you know, precinct representation and say, okay.
No, I mean, to me, it makes sense as the population continues to grow.
And you can do it all kinds of different ways. You can do, you know, two from each and one at large. You can do one from each and three at large and what have you. But like I say, what I was originally told was that they thought by expanding the board membership that they would get representation from certain areas of the community that they did not normally get.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we'll wait to hear more on that. Just following in, in with that a little bit, on the redistricting for the state. Our state senators and representatives, Francine, that was your request?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we're now paired with Westfield. Everyone knows that we've lost Lindsay Sabadosa, who is being replaced by Kelly Pease from, from Westfield. Westfield, I thought, would, had three representatives in the House. They have two. That's a correction. And the other thing, just to, just to mention, that this has all gone through the committees in, in Boston, I almost said Albany, in Boston. And it will go into effect as soon as the governor signs it. So this may happen well before January.
Oh, really?
That the change will take place. Just to keep everybody on the.
It might, it might, I'm sorry, George.
So, so correct me if I'm wrong, we went from the first Hampshire district to now the fourth Hampden district?
Right.
Even though we're in Hampshire County.
County, yes.
The two things that concerned me is that we're not part of Hampshire County and that we're not.
Hampden County.
Well, we're no longer considered to be part of Hampshire County. And we are not grouped with the other four towns that are part of our regional school district.
Yes, yeah, those are very concerning.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I know, I, two things that I, a week ago Monday, I had dinner with Lindsay over this and then after listening to her explanation of how this all came down, I had a somewhat of a better understanding. Otherwise, originally I was, you know, why are we in Hampden County now? Because we have no other, I mean, yes, our senator's there, but the senator's always been from that area. I mean, we, you know, we don't share the same district attorney, we don't share, you know, other than boundary lines, we don't share much with Westfield. But this all really has to do with one town way up in the Birchirrs lost so much population, they lost an entire seat and everything's shifting up in that direction.
Right.
And I forget what my second point was, but go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, in shift, in doing that shift, they wanted to maintain 175 districts in the, in, in the state. And in order to do that, they, they've carved everyone else up.
Right, right.
Okay, well, we will get to Lindsay while we can get to her, before she leaves us.
Absolutely.
Okay, she's been a great support for a lot of things we've done in town and, but it's good to hear that Senator Ellis is, is reaching out as well, so we will.
And as soon as this happens, I think it's time to bring them, invite them to a meeting here.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to ask, I know we're doing all the quarterly reports and with that, but maybe it would be great to add them as an annual kind of.
Yeah, no, we've often.
They came last year, so that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, we would often do that. And, and hopefully too, the, our new rep would reach out to us and if not, we'll, we'll reach out to them and have them.
The second point just came to me. Lindsay said the reason why it has to be January 1st is under our state constitution, representatives have to reside in their district a year in advance of the election. It does not apply for our state senators' veils. So they need to get it in by January 1st to take effect in the next election cycle of state votes. Because there's a resident, you have to be in your voting area a year prior to the ballot for the reps. That was the other push as to why it's going so fast.
Okay, all right, moving on. We're going to table the COA and the request for review of a staffing proposal. We're going to move on to the Collaborative for Education, CES, for mass in motion procurement discussion. It's quite a title. I think we all got an email about this and it sounds very interesting. It sounds like it's been proposed by somebody who's actually a resident. It sounds like it's been proposed by somebody who's actually a resident of Southampton, I believe?
Grew up in Southampton.
Grew up in Southampton?
I realized she was my next door neighbor growing up.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know that much about it, but we said that we would bring it up and talk about it. But they're trying to get all the, all the various towns to sign on this. I don't know, Joy, do you know that much about it or Rini?
No, that's why I was like-
I do actually know a bit about it. The reason I know a bit about it is, it's, so it's mass in motion and it's a collaborative. And their focus is on healthy communities and policies and activities and so forth. When I was teaching at UMass in the School of Nursing, I had a group of students that were working with the senior center in North Hampton. And they did similar to what our senior center did, which was a walk. They did theirs in the park. They had some vendors, they did, they were, so that's, I think that it would be something of interest to the PE department at the school, to the senior center, and also to the Board of Health. So, it's a basically initiative. It doesn't involve any money. It involves access to a collaborative, if there were activities of either of those departments or whatever, to go ahead and want to do policy development or programming or that sort of thing. I think that they're trying to increase the number of people that are underneath this umbrella for the purpose of getting more money for this collaborative. So, I mean, it might be, you know, extra work without a lot of benefit. I just think that it means either you or the Board of Health or Ed signing off on it. I don't know what the requirements are to be a part of it. It certainly sounds very consistent with a lot of things that we've done in terms of sidewalks and walking and activities. I can't speak to what the requirements of it would be that would take up anybody's time or energy, but it just sounds like it's a good thing.
And it sounds like something where there, there's no cost involved, but it's something that we would eventually potentially benefit from as part of an overall grouping of, of towns and cities that are part of this program, from what I understand, I guess.
And Caitlin did, you know, she was offering initially to come and talk to any community that might be discussing it, but she wasn't available tonight. She's someone that grew up in Southampton and she's, I mean, it sounds like it's a good thing. I just don't know what the paperwork obligation would be and who would take that on primarily, but.
Well, could I, I would like to just suggest since you're actually the liaison to Council on Aging and Francine to Board of Health, right?
Yes.
If each of you and maybe John with the school, I mean, you could bring that up at the school and your respective committees. And I think we've got the email that describes it a bit and just put it on the agenda to talk about it and then get back to us as with a recommendation, whether, you know, the interested bodies in town would, would like us to be part of this and then we could take it from there. I don't think we know totally enough now and we could invite her to come to a meeting, but that would be another, another couple of weeks.
November 9th could be our next meeting and we have to sign it by November 15th.
Right, yeah, so it's a little tough.
So, she's available.
Yeah, but I mean, there'll be other meetings from, you know-
But these committees, you know, like Board of Health is meeting November 1st, so.
So, you'll have a chance.
Council on Aging is November 3rd, so I can certainly ask that-
Yeah, you could at least bring them by there.
As far as Norris, we have a dedicated elected member, Julian Tischman, who is our liaison to the collaborative.
Oh, okay.
So, I'll forward this to her. She may already be versed in our side.
That'd be great.
Well, that's good to know.
Good to know. Well, why don't we do that? I would just suggest that that's a way to proceed since we don't have a whole lot of information tonight. But let's bring it to the two other committees at least and get them interested and see what they think.
Okay.
And then we can make a decision about signing it. But if we can maybe do a little bit more research too in terms of, you know, what, what kind of time sync this might be or what responsibilities we would have to be part of the collaborative.
And, and one thing that did catch my eye is that they said from time to time, the Department of Public Health makes additional dollars available to only mass in motion communities.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I saw that.
So, okay, so we'll put that on the agenda again. But let's see if we can have some information for our next meeting about that so we could hopefully sign it by their deadline if we decide to do that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, good. COVID-19 update. Do we have anything new to report on that, Ed? Where we stand as a town or?
The, the numbers in, you know, Massachusetts and here in Hampshire County are, shall we say, subsiding slowly. They're heading in the right direction. The number of, shall we say, break, breakthrough positives seems to be declining and shifting over to a higher percentage of unvaccinated individuals. Hospitalization numbers are still up there and pretty high as far as that segment goes. You know, other, other than that, as Joy said, you know, earlier, there are, you know, no special restrictions for Halloween this year. It is, you know, going on as planned. I believe the CDC has recommended that masks be worn, but a lot of trick-or-treaters wear masks anyway, so. But, and I, I think it's heading in the right direction right now. I think everybody's just a little bit nervous about Thanksgiving. And then, shall we say, the religious holidays coming up of, after those, that the numbers will, you know, start creeping, creeping up again, much like they did after July 4th.
On that point, I did see an article come out that Massachusetts is saying schools cannot require students to provide negative COVID tests when they're coming back from vacation. So, they don't, so schools have to allow them to come back without having to provide a negative COVID test. John's looking at me like how-
No, I know, I saw that article too, but that was, the only time we've required it before is when they were confirmed close contact.
Yeah.
So.
Or if they had symptoms.
Well, we would still require, yeah, it's just like you traveled out of state, you don't have to prove it to come back or everybody to come back. But there'd have to be some sort of legitimate reason for the nurse to require that, yeah.
Yeah, it's just like Desi has made it clear that no communities legally shall require students to be vaccinated as part of an enrollment to the school. However, the schools can make the vaccination a requirement for extracurricular activities to participate in such as sports, but.
Okay, all right. Moving on, CARES Act, both the update, if there's update and reprogramming of unspent funds kind of all combined together. You've got a bunch of paperwork in your package, which Ed can take the lead on trying to explain. What we had tried to do was take a look, based on the charts I had sent you last week, we'd, we'd gone back through and taken time to see where various departments had been perhaps overspent in some of the items that they had been given and shifted somebody to balance them out a little bit and then try to figure out how much is actually left that might be available to reprogram. So, I'll stop there and let Ed take this in more detail.
And I'll try to summarize it and then you can ask questions about it. But you'll have basically three things in your package. You're gonna, you're gonna have a summary for each of the departments that has had approved CARES Act spending with amount that was an approved, what was actually spent. And if you get to the bottom of that, you'll see if they've, they're overspent, underspent, or what have you. And then we reached out, and most of that is courtesy of Christine putting that together. I have helped her go through the files to get to those particular numbers on the actual invoices. So, the CARES additional funding or new requests which have come back to us is the highway has, is requesting $6,342.64 for additional funds for the generator install. All funds needed for this would be transferred from external approved funding. They've basically accounted, except for $10, I think it is, all of their approved funding. And at the time, the cost of the generator was pretty much known, but the cost of the additional items like the propane tank, the propane fill, the concrete pad and the insulation was not. The library has a need to spend $500 for additional masks from their underspent accounts. They will also be spending a little bit on wages to cover the book drop program. They will need $1,040 from external approved funding. And I'll put the caveat on that as long as the PCF for the substitute is approved by both the select board and the PPPB because that's what that substitute would be utilized for, for up to 10 hours a week. Town hall, basically, the additional items would be $500 for additional masks for town hall and $16,613.75 for the department head laptop project. And after Christine and I went through everything on that, there should be enough left in the underspent accounts for town hall to cover that difference. Health department will need $9,000 for additional contract tracing. This will come from their existing underspent accounts and that's for an additional six months of contract tracing. The Norris School, at least for fiscal year '21, had requested $14,913 for additional teacher to cover remote learning students, $41,000 for the upgrade of HVAC for I-Wave upgrades, $450 for mold study and $4,650 for mold remediation. The total of that is $61,013. They have asked for at least a minimum of $12,501 to cover their end of year deficit. They've also requested possible funding for some fiscal year '22 accounts. And you'll see the breakdown of that in the email from Bobby Jones to, to me to follow up on Chairman Lumbras' original request from a few weeks back to the select board on behalf of the school committee. For fire, John Mortman liked to transfer $4,500 from the administrative assistant to the road sign for the Southampton Fire Department, $1,500 from the administrative assistant account, account or line item to EMD electronic signage, and $1,500 from disposable gowns and to uniforms, which would all come from internal transfers within underspent fire department accounts. And then for EMD, he would like to additionally transfer the $7,920 available balance in the EMD to additional electronic signage. And that would be an internal transfer. So, as far as that electronic signage in the EMD account, he's asking to transfer $7,920 within EMD and $1,500 from the fire department back over there to get additional electronic signs. And then I will go from that to what looks more like an Excel spreadsheet, which says CARES funds available. We, we had $12,983 that was never authorized from the state. It was some, some items that were originally requested that were denied. So, there's $12,983 available from that. There should be from the Board of Health, $10,900 available. From the COA, zero. From the town hall, zero. From the EMD. And this assumes that the board is okay with those internal transfers to the road sign and to the electronic signage would be zero. Fire department would still have $7,000 available to it as being, from it, as being underspent. Highway needs the 63, 42, 64 to come from other available funds from here. The AG committee had $750 that was unspent. The library would need $1,040. Police department would need, or excuse me, has available $5,700 in unspent funds. The building department, zero. The town clerk would have $5,000 available in unspent funds. And I left Norris School as a blank, which assuming that the board's okay with all those internal transfers, would leave a total available currently of $34,950.36 to be reprogrammed.
Yeah, what about the $6,000 to Housing Authority for rental assistance? Is that considered spent unless it's not used?
They haven't, they, it's not used at this point in time. However, you know, their intent was still to use it, so.
Yeah, so if they choose, if we give them a deadline and they choose not to, that can be added to this?
Well, I'm gonna put this caveat on it. I have to request any transfer of funds by this Friday.
Hmm, okay.
Well, he said he's sending an email out tonight. We're not gonna leave money on the table if we can avoid it.
Yeah, that's a lot of money to lose if no one's gonna lose, use it.
I have a question, Ed. Board of Health has $10,900 available before or after they get the nine, that $9,000 asked for additional contracting.
After.
So, that 9,000?
That 9,000?
Is to cover the period of July 1st to December 30th?
Correct.
For contact tracing, which they've already uncovered. So, that eats up that nine. Removing that nine still leaves $10,900 available.
Yep.
Yes.
Because they had, to start with, they had $15,000 for a public health shared nurse that wasn't used, $2,000 for supplemental insurance rider for clinics, not used, and another $1,000 for park sports equipment. So, there's at least $18,000 right there, plus other, other overages and unders in their actual spending.
All right, so then when I look at the library.
I just asked over the Board of Health, since you brought it up. So, now, so they, so basically they got $19,000 and nine of it they're using, but that's from July 1 of 2021 to December?
Twenty, yeah.
So, they need, we budgeted $18,000.
Yeah, they need six, six more months of the contract tracing.
So, it's $9,000 for six, for six months?
$1,500 a month, right.
Right.
So, they're gonna go, this, this-
$9,000 covers what period of time?
July 1st through December 31st.
Contact tracing stops on January 1st.
So, they haven't had?
Unless, you know, ARPA funds are used or approved to pick it up at that point in time. But CARES funds as of December 31st disappear, so, yeah, so they can't, yeah.
Can't extend, okay, thanks.
So, we had budgeted only 12 months for the contact tracing. So, now we're adding the other six months.
Okay, I understand. Thanks, thanks.
So, then if I jump to the library, I see the, the shortfall of $1,040, which ties into the drop, uh, book drop-off program. But the 500 is not there and is that because that 500 is just coming from another line item with?
They, they have it within their, yeah.
Internally. They have about $1,000 available internally still that can just be shifted around for the $500 here and there for their extra masks.
So, just giving the, I would just say this on the library and staffing, I'd rather find that $1,040 in our budget because then that at least applies to our shortfall. If we use wages from the CARES money, it will not count in our calculation. And we already know we gotta come up with 10 grand. This could be 1,000 of that 10 grand if we pull, if we fund that $1,040 out of general fund money. You follow me? Because right now, there's a 10, there's a $10,000 shortfall to meet the minimum, the MUI, right.
So, what's the dollar amount on the drop of that?
$1,040.
$1,040.
Which then means we, I mean, we still have to find 10 grand within our budget, but this is 1,000 of that 10. Now, we only have to find-
No, it's not. This is only due to COVID.
Right, but if we opt not to use CARES money to pay for it, instead we use tax money to pay for it, then it counts as credit towards our minimum contribution because it's general fund receipts. Because it's general fund receipts.
It's going to have to go to town meeting.
But this, yes. But this is the, the 1,040 is related to the future PCF that we're talking about, the substitute during COVID. That's the calculation, is it not?
That's the dollar amount, and that's the reason for it.
The 10 hours, 10 hours a week.
But if we don't use CARES money and we use general fund money, then the general fund money counts towards our minimum contribution.
We're looking, we need to find $8,600. We're going to be starting this up, but, you know, they're asking for it before it gets approved by town meeting.
Yeah, how are we going to do that?
So that's going to be, that'll be a little bit difficult. Question about all these masks. I thought we got a massive amount of masks that are being stored at the police department when Don Snyder got a ton from FEMA. Is that already used up?
I don't know if theirs are or not. I can tell you that ours are pretty much depleted.
Really?
Yes.
The library's going through.
Well, yeah, I've given another few hundreds to the library, because the library seems to have a good number of patrons that show up without them.
It's true, there was a large stock over at the EMD office, right, at one point in time?
Yeah.
Of PPE?
When it came in, it was a massive amount.
Yeah.
I wonder if that's been drawn down?
It's not in the off, it's not in the office over there.
In the OC or wherever it was over there.
It was supposed to be upstairs.
Upstairs somewhere in the OC.
Put away somewhere.
So.
But that's a point, John, that that would count toward.
Yeah, but I also understand what Rainey's saying, because two weeks ago, we agreed, subject to wording, to put that on special town meeting in December, to get that money in there. The, so again, you know, I might be oversimplifying this, but I just want to make sure. After meeting everyone's request on here, the left minus Norris, the leftover available money excluding the housing at 6, is $34,950.
Correct.
And nobody else outside Norris has done, no other department has asked for anything.
Well, Highway is definitely, has asked, and they can't, there's no money left within, so they have to get extra pool funds.
Right, but it's in there, 6,300 is in there.
Now, the one thing that we haven't discussed, the two things, and, you know, we can agree to disagree on this maybe, but if you look at the fire and the EMD, okay, so we're looking at another eight or 9,000 for another electronic sign. The EMD, in the first place, got two electronic signs, and I guess they've been used somewhere. I'm not sure where.
I can't remember if we used them for the election or the town meeting.
I don't know.
Or both.
So there, you know, so this would be a third electronic sign and.
Are they rentals?
No.
We purchase them?
Yeah.
So these are the ones on wheels that you drive around, you stick around somewhere?
If you don't drive these around, you basically carry them and set them up. It's not like one that's on a little trailer or anything.
Okay.
No, it's not like your speed, speedboat or anything like that. But, so there's that one, and then within the fire department itself, what he, what John is asking to do is to take the money from the administrative assistant, which wasn't used at 6,000, plus the reusable gowns at 1,500, and put that toward the last item in the budget there, which is the road sign for the SFD, which was budgeted at 4,000, of which they've used $495. That's that beautiful COVID sign that gets hand painted out here, that they've done, they've done two or three of those, which is great. What he wants to do, though, is to put money towards that and make that a permanent sign, is my understanding.
Like a permanent electronic sign or a permanent sign that gets repainted every six months?
A permanent electronic sign as well, from what I understand. So, so that would be four permanent signs, or four electronic signs.
Well, one of them being permanent and the three others traveling amongst our community. So I go back to our public safety complex building, where's it going to be located? Now, if it's going to be out back here, and that still remains the entrance.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure, you know, in terms of, you know, I'm sure the sign can be used for multiple messages. But again, you know, as we, as we think about things, I mean, there's, there's maybe 7,000 here to play with if we didn't want to go with all of the signage. Let's just put it flat out there, right? We've got two electronic signs already, we're asking for a third, he's asking for a third, plus this permanent one. And the thing, I guess, I'm worried, not worried about, I'm just curious, because we have right on the other side of the driveway, as you come in here, the Lions Club sign, which is used for a lot of announcements too. So, I mean, I don't know how many signs we need in terms of, they feel like they're bunched up in one spot.
Then you have the A-fold sign right above that that goes out. There's an A-fold sign, right out in front of the electric panel, and then you got the sign in front of the church. It's a good billboard section.
No, it is. So I don't know, I mean, it just feels like we've got a lot of signage, and I just don't know totally how, how much is needed. It seems like a lot of money for, for that, to invest into two more signs in addition to the two we have. I mean, I could, I could see one, but I don't know that I personally see two.
And my other question on the fire department, it sounds like he's also moving money into uniforms?
Yes.
But he hasn't spent all the money in uniforms. He got 13,000, he's only spent 10,000.
Right, but he's intending to finish spending that up and needs more to top it up, apparently.
Exactly.
That's my understanding.
And these are all uniforms related to COVID?
They're the turnout gear. I believe it's a turn, no, I think it's.
Turnout or uniforms?
It is, not the turnout gear, I assume?
What's that?
Is it not the turnout gear uniforms?
No, it's, it's uniforms. It's not turnout gear.
T-shirts and pants and?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, just regular EMT fire department uniforms, so t-shirts and pants, I guess, would be.
That are only being acquired because of COVID. I guess it's more of a statement than a question. So we already supply that?
Don't know that I can tell you that for sure.
What was the question?
The purpose of purchasing the uniforms.
How is that specifically related to COVID and just not part of an ongoing operation budget? Or do we traditionally not supply that stuff?
Well, we finish, he traditionally tries to supply that stuff. The original, going way back to the original, was the fact that we supply it, but I think like maybe one or.
Bare minimum?
Or a bare minimum, and with, you know, COVID, the fact that they're transporting COVID positive individuals, that it would give them more uniforms and would give them time to, you know, wash one or whatever and have one or two other ones.
I mean.
And that's for everybody on the roster, regardless of the amount of time they work?
I would think so. I would assume so.
No, just a guess, so it's like.
I think so, because.
Like 40 people, yeah.
I mean, you know, you'd have somebody that's got the Southampton Fire Department logo on it or whatever, and so somebody, you know, would recognize that this is an official person with the fire department, I assume, yeah.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not so.
And I would leave it up to him to take a look at, okay, if somebody's been working once a week or once a month, that, okay, maybe one uniform set is enough. If somebody is working two or three times a week on average, that, yeah, they need, there's a use for multiple uniforms.
I don't disagree with that, but is, Francis, you use the number 40 for the roster, is that an accurate number?
Oh, no, I don't know.
Oh, because at 40, that's $500 per person.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
It's a lot of t-shirts.
Yeah, I don't know how many are on the roster. I mean, I'm guessing 40, because I know there are lots.
Pardon?
$1,500.
Well, he, he had 13, he's trying to put another seven in, right, so that would bring him up to 20,000.
No, he's already spent 10, so he's got three, and he's putting another 1,500, so he's got 4,500.
Okay, so it's only, it's only.
14 and 5 would be his new budget instead of 13.
15,000 instead of 20,000.
Yeah, right. It'd be 14 and 5 instead of 13,000 as budget item, budget total.
So $362 per person.
Right, well, who knows, exactly, but, yeah, I mean, to me, that, that's not as big an issue as the signage is myself.
Yeah, I agree.
So I don't know if we're.
So can I ask a general question? So with all the transferring and amounts, there's a $34,000 available amount, plus possibly another 6,000, and does that cover funding for everything that's requested?
No.
Include, no, okay, what's, what's not covered by, yes?
A lot of the things that the school is asking for.
Okay, so is it just the school, or is it?
And that's why I was making the point, is every other department getting exactly what they ask for?
Yeah.
And if that 34,000 is available, then I would certainly advocate to send that to the schools.
Oh, I agree.
Again, every other department, and that's my question, I want to be sure, if I'm not right, then tell me that, but has every other department gotten their two-week notice, and they're getting every single request that they want?
Yeah.
And we still got 34,000 left over?
So can I ask a question about the school? Was the mold study already done?
Yeah, it had to be done, it was done the second week.
Most of the stuff was done, and even the HVAC stuff was done.
So the dollar amounts are actual, okay.
And the HVAC stuff was done as well, so they've, the school got money from the education side of CARES, right? Excuse me.
Yes.
Well, I would support giving the 34,000 and additional six if it becomes available to the schools to cover these.
And, yeah, and that's leaving the 7,000 in there for the, for the sign for the fire department.
No, I don't think that we need four signs.
But that 7,000, that number's in there.
Yeah.
And I would say you can probably scratch the library negative 1040, because the very kind police chief is going to supply the library with 10 boxes of masks and the town hall with six boxes of masks from all that wonderful stuff we got from.
EMD?
EMD, yeah.
I know that there was a.
So you're saying there's another 1040 available?
No.
Yes.
Where?
What about for the wages, though?
Or is it the library?
If there was $500 available still in library, which we didn't account for, and, you know, and then if they're not going to spend $500 on masks, that's roughly $1,000. So I'd say, I'd wipe that out and say, okay, it's there. It might be an internal transfer, but they don't need outside funding.
Okay, so the 1,000, excuse me, the 1,040 may still, still be there, but it'd be not needing money from the pool. It's internal money?
Right.
Okay, so let me get you some water. Yeah, that's fine. I'm good, I'm good.
Are you sure?
Yeah, thank you. I should have brought some water.
That brings us up to 35.
So.
Do you want to have a discussion on the fire?
35,9, yeah, I mean. I think I will, it's water. I'll be back.
Yeah, somebody left here, it was never.
And reduce the fire by half?
So what was the dollar amount that the school asked for? 611013?
Well, that was the fiscal year 21 stuff. I actually told John earlier, we might put them on the spot, because if you look at that letter from, or email from Bobby Jones, there's fiscal year 21 requests, and there's actually fiscal year 22 requests. So.
So I think.
And one of the 22 requests was for two part-time nurses to work through December due to COVID, which came to like 48,000. So just in my head from what we had here, I know the school committee and the school department would probably want at least 12,501 for fiscal year 21, because that will make their final report a net zero as far as being, it's not overspent, it's not underspent, that balances it off. Then the question from there that I have is, okay, it looks like there'll be additional funding over 12,501. So what are the pri, what are, what are the real priorities for additional funding? Does it go back to all the fiscal 21 requests? Or would they be looking to, for example, because they're nurses, there's COVID reasons, blah, 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 would they want, is that the second part of that, that, they're, they're looking for 48, but, you know, are they looking for maybe the next 25 grand of that or 30 grand of that if it's available to go towards that fiscal 22 request?
The 12,501 is like the minimum to balance their books. Anything additional to that? Is that just going to end up in their EMD fund?
No, so the, EMD's at the regional.
Okay, so that's.
For, for, right, so.
So what's going to happen?
The 12, the 12, the 12,501 right now can, is coming, if it's not funded, because we can't have a deficit, is going to come out of the school choice funds, which is used to pay the, the cafeteria assistants and the preschool programs. So that would put that money back in there for the preschools, for the 12,501.
Okay.
Then, so I would say that would be the only 21 money. The 22 money is, we've already spent the 450 for the, for the mold study and the 4,650 for the remediations. So those are, we have the receipts for those.
The FY22?
Yeah, they were just, they were done the second week of school, so, second week of September. So add those to, and that gets the 17,601, and then whatever is above 17,601, we would use for the nursing staff.
Okay, so not the remote learning person?
No, because that was in 21.
And the HVAC?
That was 21. Would, so to make 21 whole, you know, taking all the other sources of money we had, we're just short 12,501.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so 12, okay.
So that 12,501 wipes out the deficit for 21.
And if they didn't get CARES Act money, how would they fund the 48,000 for the nurses?
Well, we're not going to be able to go, we're only going to be able to staff up to whatever we get.
Wouldn't do it, okay.
But at this point, though, you know, are each of the nurses like half-time or something, right?
Correct, with the last budget round, they all got reduced in hours, and now we're adding pool tests, the intestines stay into their.
But they were budgeted half-time from, say, the September to December period, so you've already got part of their salary in the budget.
Correct, so this would be the difference to get them to full-time, only during September to December.
So this, this 24,000 each is the other half of one person? That didn't sound right. 24,000 each, so 49,000. If you've got half of it budgeted already, can we just top it up to make them whole, rather than, are you asking us to fund, are they asking us to fund the whole salary for the nurses?
Well, it said it would just take care of, it would allow them to use whatever balance they have to keep the nursing level at one full-time nurse for the remainder of the school year.
Right, so right now, after the, after the budget, or in this current budget, are we, Norris has two full-time, had two full-time nurses. They're now .9s, right, so they've lost, they've each lost 10% or 20% collectively. And I think what Bobby's thinking is whatever can be used and justified in their salaries for September to December, then pushes that budget money further out. Next six months, or the remainder of the school, to make them full, to keep them at that full-time level.
And the ARPA funds might be able to kick in after that anyway. I mean, I'll go back to what I said, I support the 34,000 going to the school, 12 for FY21, and a balance to pay for the nurses, I mean, it's obviously very COVID-related. And even the additional $6,000, if the housing, if there's no interest or use for those funds, it just seems like, you know.
Is that something housing would have to vote on before Friday?
No, it's in our hands.
Okay.
I mean, they say they're not going to use it.
But we asked them to reach out quickly and see about it, but I, you know. They have had many months to use it, and there's been no interest. I can't imagine it's really.
I mean, does that, does that.
Be disappearing.
Does that limit anybody, I mean, we talked about the signs, we talked about uniforms and everything, but does the, 34 is kind of free and clear of people getting those other things, right?
Well.
Plus what we just.
So is it actually 35?
35, 34, 9, 40.
40?
Yeah. And then we were talking about the, the $7,000 for the signs.
Yeah.
If we, that gets added to that, too.
So the sign, yeah, right, so there could be 7,000 possibly there, but back on the, on the mold amount, what was that amount again? Sorry?
The, the, the study was $450, and then the actual remediation was $4,650.
Do I have this? I probably do somewhere. Oh, okay.
A 5,100 total in those two.
So in terms of the amounts, you say that from this CARES Act 1 and 2, the fire department, I mean, if we're going to make a decision not to fund something, not that many cases where we've decided, no, you're not going to get that, it's really, no, the, we're being told, no, that's not under this umbrella, like, for example, the highway departments, is it a refrigerator or something?
That was, no, for the Board of Health, and then there were a couple of other things.
Yeah, so there were a few things that they said that weren't covered, but I don't think WIVS basically said, no, we don't support that. So. Yeah, so there were a few things that they said that weren't covered, but I don't think WIVS basically said, no, we don't support that. So has the fire department received, like, do you have a ballpark number of what the fire departments receive of funding?
Yep.
Yep. In the packet here. Well, they were approved for a hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars. As of the date of doing this, they had spent eighty-two thousand eleven dollars and forty-five cents.
I believe they were second to the school in terms of the total amount of money allocated, then followed probably by board of health and then police department, or police department and board of health together, somewhere in there. Yeah, so they, they got, they got unfortunately a lot of the equipment denied early on by the state.
Yeah.
I mean, they're the ones that got most of the.
Can we just let them know that when we're going to focus on FY twenty-one and, you know, like, really things that really pertain to the end of this year? And that we'll reconsider, you know, ARPA funds or additional possibly funding for additional sign if it's, seems to be needed?
I mean, I think that the, the use of COVID and the intent of the COVID money, CARES money, is very clearly understood in the, in the health, I mean, in the school request. I mean, from, you know, I mean, making it whole, that encote, that encovers, covers part of the, the HVAC upgrade, I assume, is, is part of that twelve thousand that is needed. And then obviously the nurses, the mold study, is all very clearly COVID-related that I don't think anybody could dispute. The signage, I don't know, I, I don't feel as strongly myself about that, so.
Especially the numbers we.
I think I would like to suggest that we.
So if we put the money.
Yeah, well, we might be able to get some money from, from the ARPA money, who knows?
I also have a question about the eight hundred fifty-six dollars that the agricultural committee owes.
Yep.
Are they using that?
No, they, they got it early on. I'm sorry, they did use it, yes, I'm sorry.
There's eight.
There was a balance.
Eight hundred fifty-six.
Right, but we, um, hang on.
It's right above the housing authority amount of six thousand.
Yep, uh, I got it in here somewhere, hold on.
Number pages, though.
Yeah, there's no number, sorry.
Uh, we had to transfer some money for something. My, uh, we transferred some money out to the community cupboard because they were overspent.
Okay, so you transferred some of that money?
We transferred a hundred and six or something down to the community cupboard. They went over their budget a little bit, if I'm not mistaken.
So if we free up the library money that's not needed because of the mask, and we pull back the six thousand dollars from housing, if that's not needed, and we decide to hold off on one of the signs and say, let's look to FY, you know, calendar year twenty-two for potentially funding that, but go ahead and have the uniforms and such. What dollar amount are we talking about? Thirty-four nine plus that funding?
Plus the thousand forty, which is thirty-five nine ninety thirty-six, and then it's just a question of which particular sign you're talking about.
The, the electronic one.
Electronic one? That would free eighty-four hundred and twenty dollars more.
Seven ninety-two plus the five hundred.
The dollar amount for the sign is how much?
Sounds like, yeah. Almost nine thousand.
Almost nine thousand?
Yeah, it would be the seventy-nine, the electronic sign, he was looking to internally transfer seventy-nine hundred and twenty and fifteen hundred dollars, which is the eighty-four twenty.
Can I ask him to maybe address, you know, exactly what is available for signage and how it's being used and perhaps request that that be transferred to a twenty-two, year twenty-two request? I just don't know, like, I, I have more questions about the signage. I don't think we had any before this all happened.
We did, uh.
So, I mean, I don't know how frequently they get used. If we've got two that we've bought already, which we do, that are the electronic ones, you know, to have.
Do you know where they're being used?
What's that?
Do you know where they're being used?
Well, they're not right now.
Okay.
They're in storage right now.
Okay, where have they been used?
They were right out here in front of town hall.
Both of them?
One of them?
Both of them.
Okay.
And I can't, like I say, I can't remember if it was for the town meeting or for the elections or for both.
Okay, well, I would prefer to actually free up that funds if we already know we have two in there, unless I have an explanation from him directly on what's currently, how they're going to be used and all that, because I'm not sure that we need four of them.
Yeah, in this case would be three of them, because eight thousand would just about buy one.
That would still allow him, with the other transfer he's asking for, to do a permanent one over here at the fire station.
Exactly.
So it would be getting rid of one of the electronic ones, the mobile ones, or whatever you want to call them.
Right, and I think he had, when, when the first one was ordered way back when, I think, was it CARES Act that paid for that, or was it some other funding? FEMA?
Per what?
The, the first sign that he got, he, it was on, he was lobbying it to be, it to be stationary in front of the fire station and.
Yeah.
The whole point of it was being mobile. So this would still allow him to get a stationary one for, in front of the fire department, right?
It would.
Yeah.
So what dollar amount did you get?
The way I'm figuring it, tell me if I've missed it, so thirty-four nine fifty.
Yeah.
Is available. We've got a thousand forty from the library to add, eighty-four twenty from EMD, six thousand from housing, is that right?
Well, I would, I would call the six thousand from housing possible, because if they're still going to use it, it's not available. So I would probably vote that as a caveat.
Okay. All right, so.
Forty-three?
Yeah, it's fifty, I'm sorry, you know.
Forty-four four ten thirty-six without the six thousand is what I have.
Four.
Forty-four four ten thirty-six cents.
Yep.
And then in parentheses, with the six thousand, it's fifty forty-ten thirty-six, okay.
Fifty-four-ten, yeah. Fifty thousand four-ten, yeah, with the six thousand.
Okay.
Okay, so there's, it looks like there could be forty-four thousand four hundred and ten.
Immediately available.
The way I'm reading it correctly. So with that, do we want to specify then, are we all in agreement that this could go toward the school? And if so, the priorities would be closing out the twelve, whatever that was, twelve eight oh one, five oh one?
Five oh one.
Twelve five oh one?
Four fifty for the study, mold study, and for four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the mold remediation.
Yep.
Total fifty-one.
And then the, the balance, I believe, twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars to be applied to, to the nursing. And then if that, yeah, and then that's it.
So what's that total? Forty-one thousand?
That's the forty.
Forty-one.
Forty-four four ten?
Forty-four four ten thirty-six. I'll make a motion to apply the forty-four four ten thirty-six on towards this local school in the division amounts that John just made.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So what are those division amounts again? Because I'm the one that has to reprogram all this.
Twelve thousand five oh one to be applied to the HVAC.
Okay, that's, that's what I wa, wanted to know, which one of the twenty-ones, and I thought it might be the HVAC for, that was I-Wave, right?
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Four fifty for a mold study this year.
Yeah.
Four hundred, four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the remediation based on the mold study.
Yeah.
And then twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars and thirty-six cents to move the nurses to full-time status.
Twenty-six what?
Twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars thirty-six cents.
I come up with twenty-six eight oh nine thirty-six.
I'll go with that, too.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I do, too.
Twenty-six eight oh nine.
That's to go towards the nurses?
Nurses.
Nurses.
Okay.
Okay, did we have an all in favor on that? Did we vote?
Who made the motion, who made the motion and who seconded it?
We made the motion, John seconded it.
John seconded it, okay. Any further discussion? If not.
Wait, I do have discussion. So what if the six thousand does free up? What do we do with that?
I was wondering if you should do that as a separate motion.
Yeah, we'll do a separate motion on that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the, on the table for the use of the forty-four four ten.
I have a question, but it's, um, about the mold. So remediation of forty-six fifty, that's actually pretty good, so I'm assuming that they didn't find a tremendous amount of damage.
No, it was like a point-two spectrum. It was more of an odor within the carpet, surrounded by a particular file cabinet in the kindergarten classroom.
Okay, that's good.
And all individual families of those two classrooms were notified. There was not.
Oh, thank goodness, compared to some of the other schools, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposition? Okay, the motion carries. All right. Now, we could entertain a second motion for the six thousand from the housing authorities, should that become available.
Correct. And my assumption of that would go towards the nurses, too, Jen?
Yeah, I would. I'll make a motion to, uh, providing them funding, the, the money that was allocated for the housing, six thousand dollars is not used and available, that that six thousand dollars would go towards the nurses' salary for FY twenty-one, uh, twenty-two.
I'll second.
Well, actually, that's not true, uh, to be, to be used before the end of the year.
Right, and fiscal year twenty-two is, yep.
Fiscal twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thanks, Chris and Ed, for all your work on all of this.
Thank you.
Yeah, hopefully ARPA will be a little easier.
I'm, I'm also thinking of possible, well, depends on how we allocate it, but, uh, one, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but one thing I learned from the CARES funding was there were some people that took some liberties with what they ordered or what have you. So if we had to do CARES Act again, I'd probably say that ask the board to allow, whether it was myself or the town accountant, to actually approve every order and invoice before it was even processed, to make sure that everybody stayed in their particular parameters.
Correct.
Aye.
Paul, you would support that, yeah?
Okay, all right, uh, let's see, where are we? So moving on, American Rescue Act, ARPA funds?
Uh, not much has changed since the last report. We still know we can spend it on, you know, infrastructure for water, sewer, broadband, uh, we can do it for premium pay for those individuals that worked during the pandemic. Uh, we can use it for tr, training funds for police, for any training required from the change, or the Police Reform Act. So, and, and again, there's, there's still categories in there for renter, mortgage help, food help, food delivery, vaccination clinics, testing clinics. Probably, and, uh, you know, remote, I would say, again, probably whether it's remote learning, uh, remote information from the town as far as like a website goes or what have you, there may be some caveats in there that, um, if it was done the right way with a live feed to the website, the possible fi, you know, financial software upgrades, so.
So we're, how do we, we talked a little bit about maybe copying what some of our neighbor towns had done and doing a kind of a survey monkey out to the residents to get a clue of some thoughts that they might have, to get that input, which we could still consider doing. We just need to have somebody, and I'm sure I could find somebody to help design some level of a survey for us, um, given the various gurus around town. Uh, we could probably manage that somehow, if that's one, one task that we want to do. But I guess I just get concerned that this is, you know, month after month, we keep on, you know, kind of kicking the ball down the road here, and I think we need to have some.
I like the idea.
Some reactionary action somehow.
I like the idea, even, even if, I mean, it's not, understanding it's not going to be binding, but I like the idea of just throwing this out to the, to the, to the general public and see what their initial thoughts are.
With the categories listed.
Yeah.
Um, because I think people are going to say all kinds of agrees.
Right.
Yeah, not, not open-ended.
Yeah.
Yeah. And by going, because I believe East Hampton's already done it, Hoy Oak's done it, I think North Hampton's done it, Amherst's done it. So I think there's enough already out there that we can kind of cobble them together.
We could take a look at others' surveys that I think must be posted on.
Yeah.
On their websites and so forth, and try to develop our own from that, borrow some questions here and there. I mean, I think most people are probably asking some of the same questions, really. I can't imagine there's anything really proprietary in terms of the, the questions that are being asked about the use of ARPA. But if we want to do that, um, so let's, um, let's say that I, I will be glad to take the lead and try to find a couple of bodies to work with me to help put a survey monkey together of sorts. Okay, does that work? And we'll work with Ed to get the right categories and, you know, questions and stuff to be sure that we're not straying too, too far, too far off the range.
I think the recent communication that came out from the Mass Municipal Association, uh, really breaks it down, you know, pretty well. Housing, environment and climate, economic development, workforce, health and human services, education and food insecurity.
Yep.
I think using categories.
Yeah.
Infrastructure is helpful, I think.
Okay. All right, so we'll see if we can work on that idea. Okay. I just feel like we've got to make some headway on this and get, get some idea of what we're looking for so we can start.
And the spending is up until twenty twenty-four, correct?
Correct, yep.
Yes.
But given that we've already got money allocated, we've actually got money in, in the bank, right, so to speak.
Do we get the interest on that? Do we get the interest on that?
I think.
Serious.
I think it flows to the general fund.
Okay, but it doesn't flow back to the state.
Only if we don't spend it.
Only if we don't spend it, exactly.
Right.
So, all right, we will make some headway on that the next time around. Okay, naming rights, uh, and I know this came up way back when and we've had it on the agenda, we brought it back on here, um, excuse me, this was related to possibly, uh, a family's desire to name the East Street Bridge, uh, excuse me, after their family member who had been a former highway superintendent and, and played various roles here in town. I see Ed.
Including construction, structuring that bridge.
I'm sorry?
Including the construction average.
Yes, including the, part of the construction of that, right. Um, and Ed, I know you reached out to KP Law to get some thoughts on naming rights. What I'm seeing here looks very different, though. This looks like it would be like a corporation coming in that wants to, you know, have us have, you know, the, the South Hampton Town Hall now becomes, you know.
There's two pieces of it.
Okay.
I had forgotten actually about the second piece of the corporation, because I was a rogue when I was in office in West Springfield and also served as chair of the school committee, because when we built the new high school, I went down that road of the corporate donations or whatever for naming rights for.
Great.
And took a beating for it, so I have kind of, I think purposely forgot about that, uh, piece. But the first part of that email is still accurate. You know, they did not find anything, uh, that they have, whether it be a bylaw or a, a policy to send along to us and, you know, basically depart that opinion that naming rights belong to the entity that has a responsibility for the care, custody, control and management of a building, unless a bylaw, charter, town meeting vote, statute or deed provides otherwise, custody and control of town buildings in general belongs to the Board of Selectmen, say, general laws, blah, blah, blah. And then all real estate and personal property of the town, not by law or by vote of the town placed in the charge of any particular board, officer or department, shall be under the control of the selectmen. So it does seem to flow back here, except for. So it does seem to flow back here, except for school buildings, which, you know, and generally, I did know were going to be under the authority of the school committee or the regional school district committee. So she does recommend probably bylaw. You know, next step, I know Francine had found one. I can reach out to the small-town administrators, you know, through their listserv and see if any of them happen to have a policy or bylaw as far as naming rights. Go and ask them to send it to me.
I'm trying to remember where I got this. It may have been Granby. I don't, I don't know. But you didn't, you didn't send this to Michelle?
No.
Because, yeah, she went off and, you know, I was reading her response and it had nothing to do with what I thought our question was.
Well, except she was accurate because she answered a second part that.
Yeah.
That we didn't ask.
That we didn't ask, which is, like I say, it is accurate.
But, yeah, but in our.
I, I support a bylaw.
Hopefully you haven't had a situation like that.
I mean, the only, the choice would be a general bylaw or a policy. And I guess the only thing with a policy is something the select board could do. It gives us maybe some flexibility and it's something that we can decide on without a town meeting. Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, if you, if you wanted to change it, you can change it easier than a bylaw. The, the, the flip side of it is by policy, I'm going to guess you put the final decision in your own hands as the select board. The bylaw, just because it's a bylaw, I'm probably going to assume, and this could be incorrect, that you're going to say it's got to probably be, whether it's recommended or whatever by the select board, but it has to go to a town meeting vote. Town meeting then becomes either the good person or the bad person on that final decision. It's not the select board.
I would rather the, the town vote on it, though.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that analogy you just gave, Ed, is where I have difficulty with this because I think 999 instances, it's, it's going to be fine. It's that one time. And just, I mean, look at everything. We may make it, you know, if this was law today, and, and we, the example given about the East Street Bridge, and we approve that, you know, 20 years from now, something comes out. I mean, look at, look at all the, you know, the monuments that are being destroyed or taken down and, I think this is just a very slippery slope that, depending on how it's structured. You know, you, you don't know what the, what the future's going to hold and what people are going to think of our actions that we took today.
Or that a major renovation takes place to that by someone else, then how do they?
Yeah.
How do they get acknowledged? I think a lot of things end up coming, this brings up so many different things. Like this building used to be called the Beverly Larrabee School. It's no longer called that. I mean, there's time that changes things, there's new information that changes things. You know, when I was in the school committee at Hampshire Regional, I think I did mention this before, I kept trying to get a policy on naming because when people would come and say, can we name this after so-and-so, we had no guidance. And it became a popularity contest. So they ended up coming in, and there were three things that are named after people at Hampshire Regional. All three of them are sporting venues, and all of them are after men. And I think that that's also a tendency that tends to happen is that a lot more things are named after men. And I don't think it's a fair process of actually naming unless you have a policy that dictates how things happen. So whether it be a policy or a bylaw, I really think guidance is needed. I think there's very difficult way to kind of deal with the whole issue that comes up around the demolition of, or the change in use of a building or, you know, new information that comes up. I think you just have to deal with that at the time. But I think that we need guidance, whether it be determined by the select board or be determined by the townspeople. I just think that we, we should have a policy or a bylaw. And I just.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I, I just, I would, I would go more the narrower. I'd, I'd be more interpreted instead of, I mean, because we could have, I mean, to oversimplify it, we reserve the absolute right to rename anything we want, period. That's the bylaw. I know, I'm oversimplifying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, I mean, that's too, that's too broad. I mean, but if it was narrow, like, we would only do this, and here's the criteria, da, da, da. And then, and if the town voted on that and approved it, it also, by doing it by the town, by a bylaw method, requires the town as a whole to override it, not a future, you know, we heard Ed, he wants us to go down with three select persons. So a couple of years down the road, three people.
Yeah, no, I, I think, you know, that, I mean, there's nothing to say, if we did a policy, there's nothing to say that we couldn't still bring it before the voters, though, right? We wouldn't, we wouldn't have to.
Well, actually, you, you could probably do a policy that the last piece was, and has to be approved at a town meeting vote, by a town meeting vote.
Right, yeah.
If you wanted to do that.
I mean.
You mean the actual name that comes up, not the policy itself? But that would be one of the steps that says, this policy requires that any, you know, proposal go in front of the town meeting. So that they wouldn't be approving a policy, they wouldn't be approving every time, but is that, is that what you're saying?
Right, they'd be actually approving the naming rights.
Well, the other thing that came up recently is that the park commission named a field after somebody. Now, would, would that include, like, anything in this town, including the school, including the park, including anything? Has to go, has, has to be separate to this policy?
Not the, not the school.
School would be separate. School would be separate?
School is separate, correct.
But I mean, if you go by what is said here, is anybody who has oversight or maintaining a particular thing, that would tell me that the park commission does have. That's what that said to me. That's what this said to me.
I would, I would say if the park commission had control over it, then they should have a separate, it shouldn't say town.
It should be spelled out. Yeah, it should be spelled out.
Yeah, would have to be lined up in the, in the bylaw that, you know, this would not apply to the school committee or whatever, the school and the parks commissioner.
But they, but they should clearly have a process in.
Yeah, because this does, this does say unless a bylaw, charter, town meeting vote, statute, or deed provides otherwise custody and control of town buildings in general belongs to the Board of Selectmen.
Right, so somebody donated land to the park.
Right.
And then they put in the deed restriction, the name shall be, or the parks commission shall have authority over this. Then it would fall outside this.
Same holds true for, you know, some of the, you know.
The conservation.
Conservation.
Right.
Okay, so are we thinking that a bylaw is the way to go? Is that what I'm hearing here, or not?
Well, can we start by having Francine find the bylaw that she had passed around over a year ago? You want me to send it? I sent it out after the last meeting. Oh, I didn't get it.
I didn't receive it either.
Huh?
The bylaw?
The naming bylaw?
I don't, the naming bylaw?
I didn't get that.
I don't think so.
I didn't get it.
And I sent it to Ed. I sent it.
Don't remember getting it.
Well, we'll send it again.
I sent it out on, on October 13th.
Oh, I don't, I don't, I didn't get it, Francine.
Which was right after our meeting.
Yeah. Just reforward it.
All right, I'll send it again. Send it again.
Thank you.
So then. Just take a look at it and then, you know, decide what to do from here.
Okay, so we'll bring it up the next meeting and take a look at it. Because if we wanted to do something with that, we should get it, I don't know. Can we get it on a special town meeting warrant?
I'd probably look at doing that if you're going to do it by bylaw of the annual.
Then anyway.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so let's.
I'll send it to everybody. I sent it to Ed and Chris because I felt it might be a communication outside of the meeting. Anyway, I'll send it to everybody.
Just send it.
Thank you.
Just send the mail. Nobody will comment on it. All right, so we'll put it on the agenda for next week. Okay, good, all right. Clearwater Woodlands boundary issue, Randy, that was your question, I think?
So I took a walk on the property and I could see where the fence sort of fell over. And I assumed that that was the area where the boundary issue was. And I think the way it was left was that you, you and maybe Randall were going to take a walk on the property. When we shared this information with Marla, Marla sent us a map of the actual property and it said very clearly that it's pretty much a straight line and was able to kind of say where it was. But I believe the Beagle Club had said that it wasn't clear from the map where their fence came onto our property by 45, 50 feet. So they were looking for some additional guidance or whatever. The other thing that came up recently is, I think it was today, actually, was, again, this is a conservation restriction that Kestrel holds.
Right.
And so we got, all got a copy, I think, of the, hang on, let's see.
Why they sent the information on the Aquifer one to included it with conservation, I don't know because that's actually.
The water department.
The water department, yeah.
But what they said about the Clearwater Woodlands boundary, this is, this is a letter from Stewart, Stu Watson, who is the stewardship, stewardship manager of the Kestrel Land Trust. And he said relative to Clearwater Woodlands, at the northwest corner of the property, I found an old silt fence partially obstructing a stream. I would, it'd be great if that can be removed. So this is a directive, I guess, to the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
The next one would be in the vicinity of the northwest corner, there was a chain link fence maintained by the Hoy Oak Beagle Club that is being held up on one spot with a wire around a tree. Eventually, the wire girdle, the tree will kill it, meaning the tree. I recommend contacting the Beagle Club and asking them to remove the wire and repair their fence in a manner that doesn't require support from the tree. And lastly, observe some ATV use, but it appeared to be older. So I think one way or another, there is a letter that needs to go out to the Beagle Club relative to that fence and the wire. And also, the last that we left it with the Beagle Club was they were looking for more direction, I think, on where their fence was over our property. Do we already have that information, or does that have to be?
No, I, I'll, I'll have Judy contact the survey company in North Hampton that did the original one and get a cost for going out there and actually putting markers from one point to the other where, that line up with that fence, so it shows where it's on our property.
Judy, meaning who?
Hmm?
Who'd you say you're going to ask?
The survey company that did the original survey.
Okay, and that would be an expense that we'd have to incur?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
Why?
Why can't we just draft a letter to them, like, saying cease and desist, stop trespassing on our property, and put them on the defense?
Because the other concern was that this is the same rules that residential, I mean, by, I mean, by, whatever the name of the thing is, where if you cross over someone's property, it becomes an allowance for you to cross over someone's property. So, I mean, I think we have to have documentation that we inform them of this and that it's not okay for them to cross over into our property. And they also can remove the wire from the tree. I mean, why do we have to incur an expense?
Well, I mean, it seems like nobody can find the pins, right?
Right.
For the, for the border. So whether we, we can't find them or we don't know where they are, and they don't know where they are either, right? Is that?
So you want to identify the area that's been infringed upon.
Okay, what, what Marla told me and showed the map too is that there's clearly a straight line between pins. I didn't think that it was that hard to figure out. But if you want to start by just asking them what the price would be to put pins to make it clear what the boundary line is, and then send a letter, I just don't think we should be dra, you know, like, this has been one of those pending items for a long time.
Maureen, do you think the, do you think that there, it's the middle pin they can't find? That, that whoever you spoke to found the first pin, found the third pin, and said it was a straight line between that, but nobody could find the pin where the fence is? Is that the thought?
No, I think the fence is already over, you know, over into our property. It's a straight line from pin to pin. So it shouldn't be that hard to figure out where the line of the property is from the map that Marla sent to me. So why do we have to pay for someone to put a few extra pins when it's literally a straight line from pin to pin?
Assuming you can find those two pins.
Yeah, so I'm assuming the pins are most likely buried.
And then the flip side, that is, how far is it between the two pins?
Um, I'm not positive about that.
Is it half a mile?
No, it's not half a mile.
I mean, the, yeah.
Well, if we, I mean, I guess, you know, to take a half step here is we could send the letter with the, you know, cease and desist and that, and provide a copy of the map showing why we think it is.
We already, we did that.
And they're asking for more clarification.
We don't know where the lines are.
We definitely have to send a letter for the cease and desist for the tree. Because that has to stop right, like, before it dies. And by the way, just adverse possession, seven years, I think it is, for them to have.
So I don't know if it's possible to tell them, listen, you know, if you want us to pay for the survey, we will. But if it's found to be on our property, we're going to, we're going to add this to your taxes as an assessment, assuming they're not a nonprofit.
And who knows how active the Beagle Club even is? Are they?
Right.
Still functional over there? I don't even know.
They're functional enough to tie a wire around a tree.
Well, it's probably been there for a while.
Been there for a long time.
They're, they're an active group.
Then there's lines of fence, hence.
I never noticed it.
Here's the straight line around, or you can, that's this.
Probably. Don't go back there.
So it's not really that, that hard to determine. It's literally a straight line here, but maybe they don't know where that line is. But I think it's not that hard to pick it up.
Well, if, if you guys found at least two, two of the pins, is that right? You were able to see them when you were out hacking?
Yeah.
So why can't one?
They also did a tremendous amount of logging on that border.
Really?
Yeah, tremendous amount.
So they are active. You mean the Beagle Club did logging? Yeah, so they're active.
The Beagle Club's.
I mean, logger is not.
Well, so the question would be is whether they had a state forestry plan to do any logging?
There's no questions.
Yeah, do, do you know where, where the pins are?
Yeah.
Have you seen them?
Yeah, I think Cindy, who went with a walk with me, actually took pictures of them.
Well, couldn't we take a rope and?
Well, not only, if, if someone knows where they are, I'll go out there with them and take a care and a bar and spray paint and spray the pins.
There are, there are already, like, pink tabs, things on them, ribbons, whatever you want to call them.
There should be, yeah. We did, we have the survey done when we purchased this property.
You have this picture, right?
Like, this isn't.
Yes.
Okay, so you can see where the fence is, and you see this, it's literally a straight line.
Okay, so what do we need to do? If, if we know where the, the pins are, we want to actually go out again and mark this?
Actually, I'll, actually, I'll do two things. Like Cindy, you'll go out there and show me where they are, I'll orange mark them. I'll also borrow the GPS from the highway department and GPS the two of them and send that information to them.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, okay.
But we definitely need to get back to them also about the information we just got about the tree.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So we'll, it keeps coming back on your plate there, Ed, sorry about that.
It's okay.
But maybe.
All right, let me know if, if I can help.
Sure.
I'll go for a walk and we can grab Cindy.
Yeah.
She, because I was saying, every time I go there, I seem to go in circles and not really sure exactly where I am.
Cindy knows it like the back of her hand. I mean, she knows that whole area.
So many people in the Conservation Commission who know that property.
So anyway, all right, so we'll, we'll, we'll assume that Ed and maybe Cindy will go for a walk and, and mark the boundary with beautiful orange paint and.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Whatever else. Mark the line.
And, yeah, like I say, I'll mark the two points.
And do the GPS.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, moving forward.
Sounds good.
Let's do that, yeah. And then keep in mind, though, that we want to still notify them about this infraction. And is, is that something that CONCOM was going to do, or is that up to us to do? It wasn't clear to me on that email from the guy. Is that a CONCOM action to tell them?
I mean, if we're, I, I mean, I feel like if Ed is having communication with them about the boundary, let's just shoot that in there, but.
I mean, it was a report back to.
Yeah, I don't know how much, how much correspondence or communication Marla has with the Beagle Club.
Uh-huh.
I don't know.
Okay.
That's something I'd have to follow up with her, which I can do.
I don't think she's had any.
Okay, all right. Okay, so revenue and expenditure 2022. We've already talked about what we're going to do for 2021 in terms of the scope of work, getting that out, out to the three people and back by the next meeting. So for 2022 update, looks like we have the expense report, but not yet the revenue report. Is that right?
Yeah, we haven't started on balancing the revenue package yet. It's the next thing that we'll be doing with Bradley and Ellen.
Okay. So just on the first page, there seems to be two things that are really approaching a lot of expense already. I guess the first one that attracted my attention was the webpage maintenance. We're already 71% spent on that. That seems like.
Yep.
We've been posting lots of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And there's more to do.
Yeah.
Wow.
Gas and electric is the other one.
Well, that's, yeah, and then the employment advertising, we're slightly, got to do something there. The, the other one that attracted my attention was, I guess, the, the, um, the postage, I assume, has to do with the tax bills and whatever going out, right? That must be part of that, extra postage and stuff we've done lately, probably.
Yeah, but that's, that's, she only has, she only has, what, two more to send out?
Yeah.
What about these ones, Ed, like, gas and electric?
Oh, gas and electric is the.
All that cow power stuff.
Funnel account for the cow power and the net metering credits, so then it has to be journal entryed out of there.
Okay.
So that, as we talk back on the scope of work for twenty twenty-one, that has got to be a huge
Yeah.
effort that somebody puts together, is to figure out the net metering and the cow power stuff. Because that is, you know, constantly showing in the negative. It's, it's something, honestly, if, if the cow power.
We can figure that out internally. It's just learning how to do the journal entries to make that correction.
Okay. It just, it just seems like it's, it's one that just kind of keeps on building up, and it just seems to be a more of a headache to administer than it is, I guess I wonder how much benefit we're getting out of it.
It's a giant pain to administer. It's to the, to the point of, again, knowing now, you know, knowing then what you know now.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Was it actually worth entering into, into those?
Yeah, yeah. And then those are still a longer term arrangement? We've got a few more.
Yeah, long, long.
Very long.
Can Bradley, um, help with that?
Yes, it's, it's just one step at a time of, you know.
Sure, okay.
Making out of what they're learning.
Yeah, understood, okay.
Another concern is all the maintenance. So if you go through, like, police equipment maintenance, eighty-five percent, fire truck maintenance, a hundred percent, ambulance, a hundred percent. Bill, gas, was it plumbing, seventy-six, and we're supposed to be at thirty-three right now. We're one-third through the fiscal year almost. I mean, one.
Now, anything like the ambulance maintenance, that could never be attributable to CARES funds? For use in COVID responses?
No.
You can't allocate any of it?
Do you want to spend the time to allocate fifty dollars or a hundred dollars of it? I don't think it's worth it, so.
Well, you know, most people you're picking up, you don't know if they're COVID.
Right.
Anything was probably back in the early days of, of twenty twenty, when we had the real.
So we should have been the one at that and not now.
If we could have, but.
Cindy, we're still in.
I know we still are, but I mean.
Still in it when it comes to ambulances and hospitals.
I don't know. Yeah, I, I don't know, I.
But I, I agree, it'd be very hard to break it down.
Yeah. Other, other ones that were attracting anybody's attention from the general fund at least?
Nope, they're the only ones I had.
Oh, I just had a question. So the prior year incumbent expenses, that means we're paying off expenses from last year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the police equipment maintenance, a lot of that is front-loaded, much like we pay the general insurances or the workman's comp.
So we would have fully paid already, like, that's what we had said before on the miscellaneous expenses, the retirement contribu- contrib-
Correct.
Contribution, and the workers' comp we've already paid upfront, right?
Right, exactly.
The worker, workers' comp, you might have an audit coming through, right, so?
Right.
We want to keep those reserves, but the retirement money is available for reallocation.
Fire truck maintenance, he uses it so he can keep track of it technically. It's got to come out of the twenty-six one hundred that's up above, so it's got to be transferred in. Same with ambulance maintenance.
So he's broken it out just for his own internal management purposes, rather?
Right. And at some point, and at some point in time, he really should, even though if he's got to bite the bullet, reduce the twenty-six one and put some dollar amount in the other one. Well, I know what, I know what he wants to do is have the twenty-six one and then, you know, three thousand or five thousand.
Right, so, so this, this is, this is one of, this is a glaring example of where I think we can do a better job in transparency. Because if you're just looking at, at these numbers, and just because we're on the fire department and all that, the, the voter doesn't really get the full picture of what's going on here. You know, and the, I, I completely understand the fire chief's reasoning for why he does the wages the way he does and all that, and, and I, and I don't find fault with that, but from a municipal oversight point of view, it's like, you know, if you're, you're staffing an ambulance twenty-four seven, those are your wages. You, you pay the fire, firefighter only when there's an actual call. I haven't gotten so far to figure out whether he pays them for training or not, but when there's an actual call, so there should be a set pool of money for paid-on-call fire department. And we go back to, you know, the, the chief's request for additional funding for wages for ambulance, when, when you look at this, you know, I'm, I'm surprised you just don't put the chief's salary in there. Just put everything in one big pot, and then they can use it either way they want. It's like, you know, one paramedic twenty-four seven, one EMT twenty-four seven. Yes, I understand stipends, he pays a lieutenant an extra dollar to do the reporting. So, okay, if they work forty hours a week, that's two thousand, sixty dollars a year. You know, all these things could be in there, so we could see where these lines are and what they are. So when we get to the argument of what kind of service do we want, do, are we satisfied with just one ALS ambulance? Because here's what that costs, not kind of commingling everything together.
Yep.
So. That's where that new committee will get to, I hope.
Okay, all right. Any other questions about the expense report that we have before us tonight?
I have a question on page three.
Okay, go ahead.
On your debt service. How do, how do we have, I see we did a, a principal payment on the WPAT bonds, but there's no corresponding interest. Was that zero percent? Nope. Everything else has an interest down below it. And since you pay debt twice a year, I would assume that there'd be a line on him in there, unless, of course, it's, it's zero percent, which I think is wonderful.
Yeah, it's, it's a number that actually flows from the, uh, water department's enterprise fund, so I'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay. And then the, um, on, on, on page four, under, um, prior year incumbent expenses. So, that thirty-two thousand was, was spent, so part of the twenty twenty-one closeout is there'd be an encumbrance of thirty-two thousand, which would offset that? Am I reading that the right way?
Yes, and then it's just a question if that's in here already or not. Regina set up the budget.
So the thirty-two would have been spent on what?
Well, because it says actually expended, so I'm assuming it's already been spent.
It's correct.
So it just, it's part of doing the, the closeout for twenty-one. There'd be a group of invoices that gets you to that thirty-two thousand, and then you're basically reducing your free cash.
Multiple lines and whatever.
Yeah, there should be a corresponding line in here somewhere.
Okay.
It actually, probably, might even be a little bit higher than that.
So, so my follow-up question to that would be, is it standard practice for this board to see what the encumbrances are in detail at some point in time? Or is it just a number that's left for the auditors?
It's a number that's left for the auditors.
So I think, like, in twenty twenty-three, I'd, I'd be interested in seeing what that number is. For twenty twenty-two, especially if we end up, depending on what course of action we take, because it, it is a place where you can hide things, so to speak. I'm sure that's not the case, but, you know.
Yeah, if it shows up, yeah.
So there's never a separate warrant that would show the, the amount for the encumbered expenses, then?
Well, I think what John is probably referring to is not the number. I think he's looking for the detail that went into the number of the requests that get sent to the accountant for the encumbrances every year.
Yeah, and, and, and part of it's me just not knowing enough of the internal policies that are currently in place. Like, perhaps the department head can request an encumbrance of a thousand dollars and under, and only the town accountant approves it. But maybe anything over a thousand, the town administrator has to have a, a signature on it, or the select board needs to be notified. You know, part of that is just figuring out what the existing policies are, and maybe fine tuning them a little bit.
And maybe that's something that the finance committee should design in terms of policy, or look into.
Given the current makeup of the finance committee, I think they would have a firsthand knowledge of what the current policy is. That'd be good, yes. I can add that to my list to bring to them.
All right, I just had a couple others, Ed, on, on page six, under the, the road construction fund. We've got chapter ninety funds for nineteen and twenty and twenty-two. Was there any FY twenty-one funds? For chapter ninety?
I'd have to go back and take a look at why that isn't in there. Well, I, I know why it probably isn't in here. It hasn't been, there's nothing been expended to it as of yet. And, and because of the fact that we haven't brought over the previous year's balance.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then on the following page, just because I don't remember this one, what was the, the Mass Works grant? Just remind me who that was?
What's that?
The Mass Works grant for twenty-two thousand, what was that? What was the Mass Works grant? I don't know that I know that one.
That would be paid to MIG Construction for the East Street Bridge, for mobilization.
Okay.
And, and basically, the way that, just so you're aware, what we did with the Mass Works grant, because it's got an expiration date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two on it, is we basically front-loaded the budget on, on that, so the million dollars we got from the Mass Works grant, um, is loaded all into the demolition costs of the bridge. So, the mobilization cost goes in there. The next thing, um, when we get, I mean, Eversource was great. They did the pull movement without charging the town anything, which I haven't seen done before. But, um, our agreement with Hoyok Gas and Electric is that we will reimburse them for the cost for the drilling and the movement of, uh, the gas line, which I think caps out at, I think it's a hundred and twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars. As soon as we get that built, that'll get front-loaded into demolition costs, so, um, that's how we set that one up. So, all the, all the original and early costs that we see for that project will, uh, go against that million-dollar Mass Works grant.
Okay, yep. And then, just, just so I'm clear, in terms of the, the various grants that we're getting, do they all come in under the other special revenue funds as a category, or do they come under some other?
I have to be careful since you said all. I'm sure there's probably some exceptions out there, but I would say at least ninety-nine percent of them, uh, would fall under that other special revenue.
Okay. So that's where we would see the, the Greenway one and the, the, um, the town, the two that we got for the, um?
Right. And the, and the ones that were reimbursed, are reimbursable because they don't have a budgeted amount. We haven't received the dollars from, uh, whether it's the state, the federal government, whoever, you will see those. They will go negative as we expend them, and then we have to, you know, do a report and send in the invoices and ask for reimbursement.
But they should all still be listed there, right? We should be sure that we've got all the grants
Right.
Under the special, or not all, but the one, the ones I'm thinking about from the grant committee, let's put it that way.
Right.
The, the two Greenway ones, and the sidewalk one, and the park one theoretically.
And then, and then conversely, if you get a grant that the money is given to the town actually upfront, and then you, then you would spend off it, then you would see that dollar amount set up as a, as a budget, and you'd work off that.
Right.
So two different types of grants. Probably ninety percent of the ones that we receive, or ninety-five percent, are the reimbursable type.
Right. So even though there might not have been any expenses yet, the name should still show up there, so we don't lose track of it.
As long as we set it up as a fiscal year twenty-two account, yes.
Because otherwise, I could see them just getting lost somewhere in the, in the shuffle. Okay. All right, any other budget questions? If not, we'll keep on moving here, guys. All right.
John, John had raised at the last meeting the, um, retirement contribution, the fact that we got a discounted rate because we paid early, and there's a surplus that had been budgeted of sixteen thousand. What about, you know, we talked about, he, he made the point of using that as a source of funds for the library.
It's a possibility.
So.
A possibility of a source of funds for just about anything.
So how do we, what do we have to do? Is that in order to, to, to transfer that money for that purpose? If that's what I, we decide to do?
That would be an article for town meeting.
Okay.
Have to specify the funding, funding source. What's our deadline to create the article?
They have to be back to us. And I don't, won't say that they have to be in their final form, but the general parameters have to be, you know, like, like the library.
Okay.
We, we want, you know, we're looking for, and I'm just throwing this out there because I can't remember the exact numbers. We're looking for eleven thousand five hundred dollars, and I know they have to go into certain accounts, too. So I gotta find out from Jessica or Barbara, you know, which accounts and how much go into each one, and then you do that, you do a total, and then you do, and to be transferred from, from, and then you give the account number of where you're getting that, that funding from.
So can this wait till the ninth, is what I'm wondering?
Well, you, you'll, you'll see a basic, like I say, it may not be worded perfectly, but you'll see something on, on the ninth, uh, you know, to that effect.
Okay, so you and Barbara will be working on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
And just in, in general, so communication went out to everybody, right? All department heads, any warrant requests?
Yeah. And it's, it's on the, uh, it's also on the, uh, homepage of the website.
Okay. All right, so moving on, um, we don't have any, under the signatures, we don't have a personnel change form. We're gonna take that up later on, yeah. We have no licenses and permits.
Skip over the cost efficiency.
Oh, gosh, I did. I'm sorry. So sorry. Back up. One topic, yes, our Cost Efficiency Alternative Committee discussions. Last I heard, we haven't had any public members sending in their expression of interest, and I don't know where we are with the cluster groups and their chosen people.
Still two cluster groups that I, I'll have to check my emails, but I haven't seen any definitive. I've seen people say, you know, I'll do it in this group, or I'll do it in this group, but I haven't seen any definitive from two of those groups that this individual is, uh, representing this group. I mean, other than Group Two, I think it is, which Chiefillingsworth is, uh, representing.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and I believe another group already selected someone as well. I, I guess they haven't communicated that. Should we send a reminder?
I will.
Yeah, well, and you'll, if you have a department head meeting, or if you have one coming up this week or not?
I do on Thursday.
Okay.
But not, but not, for those groups that, like, have boards and committees, you know, within them, the boards and committees aren't there.
Yeah, they may not know about it, yeah, so.
Can you just refresh my memory? Have I sent you the Norris name? If not, I, I will look.
I think you did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so let's, let's see if we can keep on this, and I think, um, we have it on the volunteer page of the town website. But maybe we can ask Robert to put it in his newsletter. Again, there was the public announcement kind of thing that we had created, uh, calling all volunteers kind of thing, um, which is on the volunteer page of the website, so, uh, I can reach out to Robert and ask that he put it in his next newsletter at least. So we're looking, for anybody who is listening still, we're looking for, uh, three people, I believe we said, uh, that have got background in financial management, uh, human resources. that have got background in financial management, human resources, anything that can help us take a look at some of the issues around our services and our costing and our plans for future sustainability and sharing services and whatever else we might have for creative ideas. So anybody is welcome to send us a note and get in touch. But we need to start moving on this pretty soon if we're gonna do it. So I'm hoping that by the next meeting on the 9th, that we'll have a clearer idea of at least the core committee. Even if we don't have all the town people, I think we would still need to meet and have a first iteration just to get ourselves off the starting block. But anybody who has got people, reach out to them, encourage them to read the news and get back to us if they're interested. You know, and I don't think the time sync is gonna be too terrible. We were talking about one meeting a month, and I think the challenge is gonna be more for the cluster groups because they are kind of disparate in terms of their, 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 what do I say? Their ability to get together and so forth. I mean, I would not expect them to have separate meetings themselves in between time. They would have to have some sort of email communication, I would say, from their designee back to the cluster. But I can't imagine trying to get, you know, so many different people together for other meetings. So I think, you know, that would be probably more, a different form of communication. But we can all decide that at the first meeting. Okay, so with that, sorry. Any other business that cannot wait until the next meeting? Boy, I really did mess up the last two. I must have spaced out here, sorry.
Do we have requests from PQB on the PCF here?
We've got this, this is what's under the?
Robin Richards reached out to me since their last meeting last week was canceled due to a lack of quorum, and asked me, since they didn't meet, did, she said she dropped the original PCF form off to me if the select board wanted to act out of it, out of turn, conditionally on PPVB approval at their next meeting to take up that PCF request from the library for the part-time substitute.
Okay, and so this is for Emily Munzka, I believe, for the library. And this would be, it says here, if I can read this, this is not a change in Emily's present position.
Joining the substitute pool.
Right, she's just adding into the substitute pool and would work not more than 10 hours a week on substitute wages, not on her current wages. So the substitute wages would be $13.77 an hour versus her normal rate, which is $14.28 an hour. So she would work up to 10 hours at $13.77 as a substitute. And this is what they wanted to be able to charge to the CARES Act, which, from what we've talked about, this should be able to be covered internally from the shifting, right?
Correct.
Within the library account already. All right, so there's no other, no other monies, et cetera, involved that I can see. Barbara's note, she's already a nine-hour-a-week circulation desk staff member, fully trained and experienced. Two of the substitutes are not working during COVID, so they need to have somebody else as a substitute.
Do you want me to clarify what you just said about the CARES Act?
That this would be charged to the CARES Act, this cost. So this, from now until the end of December. So this would be, that was where we were coming up with the $1,040 originally.
It's a program that they wouldn't be running other than?
Because of CARES.
Because of the pandemic, correct.
Right. Yeah, so that, but the money that we had thought about would be able to be covered now because we've shifted things around. Okay, so this, the request here has been signed by Barbara and by the accountant. Obviously, as Ed said, this has jumped over PQB because they did not meet. They've referred it to us if we want to act on it tonight. Does anybody have any thoughts or discussion?
The only thing, I would just want the record to state that the committee didn't refer this to you. The clerk of the committee, I assume acting under her own cloak of authority, opted to reach out to the town administrator to try and circumvent the system. While on its face, I'm not opposed to this at all, I think it just should be noted that it seems a matter of convenience when something needs to get pushed through because there was a vacancy on the board right now, and they couldn't meet quorum, that without a communication to the rest of the board, or if there was, I did not get one, that this course of action was being taken. So I take objection to that part.
Okay.
But the matter itself, I'm in support of.
Okay, so noted, okay. All right, any other comments?
Heading up on this top says emergency two-week appointment. I'm assuming that is not?
I'm not sure if that's true. I don't think that's right.
I don't think that's right either.
I think on the forming, the form, it's not correct.
Their next meeting is not until November 18th.
Right.
Where does it say what fund it's being?
There's a box there, it's torn off the original, that usually is checked if it's an emergency two-week appointment.
Okay, so amount to be charged, account to be charged, the 245100.1 is what?
CARES Act.
It's actually 100, so they left off the last two zeros.
Okay. So it is coming out of CARES Act?
Right.
Okay.
And this would be dealt with within the existing library allocation?
Okay.
Now that we've moved the masks around.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this pending PQB approval, since the request came from PQB and it's an existing employee.
Now, do we want to do a pending? I guess we can't formally totally approve it. It has to be a pending, so this can't take effect until the 18th at least.
Well.
And if they don't meet again, then what happens?
Well, see, this is where I go awry with procedure. Because, you know, this committee wouldn't know that, that, now, maybe the clerk wasn't acting on her own. Perhaps she communicated with only the two of the other members, and for some reason, I wasn't in the loop on this. They may have condoned this all via email. But the policy's pretty clear. Once PPQ sends it here, it doesn't need to go backwards. So we can just approve this and be done with it.
I'll just resend my motion now and say that I'll make a motion to approve this PCF as is.
Okay.
And so then she can start?
Yeah. Immediately.
So December 30th.
Guarantee that on the 18th of November 4th. This is what we dealt with with the finance committee last year.
Okay.
So.
I have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, taken care of, thank you. All right, I think we're down to the list. No other signatures, no licenses or permits. Francine, if you want to go through the warrants?
Okay, payroll warrant, 22-14 for $281,701.69. Payroll deduction warrant, 22-14 for $47,262.45. Payroll deduction warrant for health insurance and retirement, 22-14A for $198,456.25. Vendor payable warrant, 22-15 for $63,000, $960.67. Vendor payable warrant, 22-15A for $1,300. Payroll warrant, 22-16 for $288,895.64. And payroll deduction warrant, 22-16 for $46,111.56.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
On the copies that I have, Ed, it looks like the last two don't have your signature. Did you subsequently sign off on those?
Um, there's, um, there's only three lines, so just sign it over.
2215? 2215 and 2215A.
2215 and 2215A.
Oh, there, something had been, a bill came in unbeknownst to the Department of Commerce when they prepared the first warrant, so it was added. It was from the Veterans Agent. And it just came in after the warrant was prepared, so they just did an amendment.
Okay, but, so Ed, you did sign off on it, or you?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any other comments or questions about the warrant and expenses?
I'm sorry, I have to correct. The $1,300 was for the ambulance.
Yes, it was.
A bill coming in, yes.
For that relicensing.
Yes, it was their licensing fee.
For the ambulance.
For the ambulance. The other was another matter, and they caught up with it. Thank you.
And we have to pay for the ambulance license upfront, and they usually don't give us, or the fire ambulance department, much of a notice when they're coming. So I think each year that I've been here, that's been put on a separate warrant just because of that.
That's right. Okay, very good. Okay, no other documents requiring signatures, but we do have three sets of minutes to approve. And I propose we probably just take each one of them separately. There's a couple tiny things I've noticed.
Motion to approve the minutes of August 31st, 2021, subject to discussion.
Okay, could I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, is there any discussion on that one in particular?
I'd like to ask you to ask Kathy Ingram to change the footer on the bottom of the page. I'm sure it's a template, that she just changes the date and have it be Select Board.
Right.
And our attorneys, too. She's, in her document, she's still referring this to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
They are programmed due to mass laws of, all select boards are Board of Selectmen.
Oh, we changed it by town meeting, so they can change it in the footer of the page.
With all payment of invoices until so done.
Okay, so.
Were there any questions on August 31 minutes?
Yes, on page three, under my remarks, the third line, "No decision was made due to a lack of information."
Yeah, yeah, I know such a thing, yeah.
Just insert the word, two words, "a lack."
What's that?
Under Francine's, third sentence of page three.
Third line down, "No decision was made due to a lack of information."
There's two words missing. Put in "a lack."
Third page.
Yep, top of the page, Francine.
Right here.
Line that starts variance.
No decision was made.
No decision was made due to a lack.
Information.
Yep.
Okay.
I have another request, and, Ed, I already wrote this in here, so I'm just gonna forward this packet back to you. But when we had the PCFs, it says Maureen Groden had questions and asked to table this until Lucy could come in to talk about this. So I just want it spelled out what I was requesting, okay? Which is basically why some PCFs for election workers and some of them are wardens. What's the difference? You know, and who decides? Why aren't all candidates? I mean, I just like it spelled out in the minutes what I had asked Lucy. And I have that all written up. If you want me to read it, I will. Are there representative numbers from both parties? And how are wardens' workers called into work? Are they asked equally? So those are all the points that I asked Lucy to address, which she did the following meeting, but I just want them in the minutes, okay? So if I could just forward this packet to you, you'll have the wording.
Okay.
Thanks.
What page was that on, Ed?
That's on the bottom of four out of five.
Oh, yeah, okay, got it, yes. Okay, so with those changes, do we have anything else? If not, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 31st as amended?
So moved.
Is this all the changes?
Just for this set of minutes, yes.
Oh, I'm only asking because this set of minutes is one that I made changes to already from last time of clarifications. So I would really like to have it come back and not have anybody find anything else again.
Yep.
I wasn't here last time. I had actually kind of passed that information over to Chris, but she can't really. I had to speak for myself on that one.
Oh, no, just the main thing is the lack of the, the two words that were missing, we didn't notice the first time.
It was my own fault because I wanted to bring it back after I looked at the video and clarified that. I should have taken up your kind offer to just as amended and done it.
Okay, all right. The minutes for September 14th are next.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 14th, 2021, subject to discussion.
Could I have a second?
A second.
All right. I had just a typo on there. Where did I find it? Hold on. Page two, under the appointments and resignation, just Margaret Larson. Her last name is L-A-R-S-O-N in two places. Under, middle of the page, page two.
It wouldn't be a bad idea when people come to the podium if they spell out their name. Because this is actually kind of a common occurrence.
So that was?
You know, I think that she ends up having to guess the spelling.
Right. I think that's all I saw on the 14th minutes. Anybody else, anything?
Yeah, I have a question about one thing on?
You said there was two misspellings?
Right in that, her name twice, right in that same section, under the?
Second one is under the vote.
Under the vote, roll call vote.
That's the one I found, I can't find the other.
Yeah, right up in the second sentence.
Oh, okay. I was looking after the bullet point, my fault.
Yeah, Rainey, go ahead.
On page four out of five, under the section where it says personal change forms, when it goes down, the one that says Ellen Crusek, not the first time she's mentioned, but the second time, it says, "A motion was moved by Maureen Groden and seconded by Francine Tishman to approve a PCF. Ellen Crusek, Assistant Town Accountant, part-time, benefited 20 hours per week." I don't think we were trying to do PQB approval. I think they bypassed it.
Yeah, they pushed it back.
They pushed it back. So I don't, I don't remember my motion saying approval by the PQB. Because we weren't sending it back to PQB. We were the backstop there. They did not approve it, actually.
Right.
Is that the right meeting, though?
I, I think so, wasn't it?
We were the ones that approved the final thing so she could be, she could be hired and move on. So I don't know if you, someone would have to go back and relook at the thing, but it wasn't my intention to have it be a PQB approval because I think they passed it through and back to us, yeah.
Right, when they?
So that would be true also under the PCF emergency.
Maureen, I believe that's the first time we sent it to them because then we bring it up again on the 28th.
Yeah, 28th, that's when you made that motion.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So it's the second time, is it right?
All right, so forget that.
Yeah, I think that's actually okay. So it's just the correction on Margaret's name on that one.
Okay.
So with that correction, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 14th?
So moved. Oh, aye, sorry.
Somebody second it? Joy, second it?
Yeah, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We'll get together yet.
Yeah.
All right, last one, September 28th minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 28th.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion. We just have Margaret again on the first page, under Quarterly Reports. Just a typo.
I have a question. Did we find anything information about the VoIP system? Did we ever get an update about that?
What system?
The VoIP system, yeah.
Not yet, no, they're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
They should be coming back to us.
That just jogged my memory.
Yep, no, they will be coming back to us. They're meeting on the 8th, and I imagine they'll have something.
Okay, awesome.
The tech committee will have some news at that point. We'll probably schedule them for that second meeting in November.
Okay. The only other thing I saw was page three, under Green Community Grant. And there are a couple of, it says grant funding, and there were a couple of proposals.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right here, if you need to see it.
All right.
And the paragraph below that, I think it sounds okay. It says, "John Lumber and seconded by Francine to allow PEBPC to do the annual report provided the funds are charged back to the Green Communities grant." Did that call get made?
Yes.
Are they gonna be able to do it?
Yes.
Okay, good. On the next page, which is page four out of five, under the? Okay, good. On the next page, which is page four out of five, under the section that says, "The PQB returned the PCF on the sign. The PCF needs to be corrected." That's on a denniscentical. So bullet point number three, where it says, "The motion passed three zero two." Shouldn't that be three two zero? Don't you go yes, no, abstain?
Correct. Usually.
Yeah.
So it should be three two zero.
Three two zero motion instead of three oh two.
And then the last pair, last bullet in this section, it starts off any other necessary business. On the bottom, it says, "To use a previous classification compensation is for the purpose of setting the FY twenty-two budget, in particular for calculating." It was actually for the merit increases. I don't believe that classification system was used to set COLAs. It was used to set the additional two percent merit. Am I wrong about that?
No, I think that's right. Yeah, because we were doing pretty much a COLA across the board.
We voted to use the presentation that PQB had done at the time, Art Lawrence, and the use of the chart was to determine the additional, who we were going to approve it or suggest would get additional two percent. It wasn't really for the COLAs. It was more for who qualifies to get an additional two percent. You don't have to say merit, because I think we just.
Right.
Additional two percent.
Yeah, additional two.
But it wasn't for COLAs.
Okay. But the last sentence is correct, right? You asked John to find out if the PQB chart was updated to reflect the recent COLAs.
Right, because I think what happened was they added two percent for every year and included two years where COLAs weren't given, and so we weren't sure that their chart was accurate anyway.
Okay. Okay.
We ever get an answer to that?
I don't think we have, because they haven't met.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, anything else? If not, uh, so with that in mind, could I have, are we, do you have a motion? We have a motion and a second for the minutes of September twenty-eighth. All in favor with those corrections?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so be it. Great. Okay, guys. Nope, I lost my last page now.
Yeah, was it?
Uh, thank you. Outstanding, anything outstanding? Oh, we had the, no, no, we still had the.
Was there another one?
Charter building. There was nothing going on, right?
Okay, I don't have that copy.
I don't think there was any other outstanding business that we had. Somewhere I've, maybe lost my page here, but that's.
Behind the South Hampton, Park Commission.
Oh, okay.
This is the last page.
Oh, okay.
Double sided.
All right.
Okay, the Old Town Hall and the Charter Building. I think the only thing on the Old Town Hall, we were, we're still talking about, the working group had met a while ago now, a few weeks ago, and we were gonna be reaching out to, to the former company that worked on it. What was it? Hill, Hill and Associates, is that who it was?
Yes.
To sort of get an idea about costing of any of the roof area repairs, not the brickwork, per se, but there were some flashing and painting and things that needed to be done, and no matter what we ever do with that building, we've gotta do some basic maintenance to keep it, keep it alive and keep it from further disintegrating up top, at least, before we even get down to any of the brickwork and drainage work. So that's something we still need to get a cost estimate on, and if we could think about that for, possibly if we had a cost estimate, we would put it in for the town meeting, special town meeting, so that we would have money available to work on it early in the spring. It's too late probably to do any kind of painting and repairs right now, I would imagine, but so that's the only thing on that that we would still like to not lose sight of. Okay? So with that in mind, I think we are done. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Long one. Long one, long one.